Get a word in edgewise with you guys then.
Being it is ten o'clock, we are going to call the morning workshop session for the Board of County Commissioners to order. We will begin with our department update Deputy Director Jeff Hunter.
Okay, we have a few items on your consent agenda this week. First item is the amendment to the non-capitalist, which adds three projects. The courthouse room design, repair, the jailhouse roof and soundproofing of the dispatch. The design courtroom designs carryover from last year. The jailhouse riff leaked, and so we got it fixed. We just need to kind of square that away and the soundproofing dispatchers with, which emergency management is bringing the the dollars with that. In addition, two projects have been delayed and because they weren't, we weren't successful securing additional grant funding. And that is the quick attack, the south end of the Clucatac County grandstands and the livestock barn doors. Those still need to be done, but they've been pushed back from this year. Number six, we have an interlocal agreement with the city of Benjen. And it's to trade STP dollars. And I wish we would have written the amount on there. That would have been made things better. Not so it's in your packet. It's pretty, it's pretty substantial. And what it is, is we get STP dollars, which is federal dollars. The cities do not have CA status, which is contractual authority. County is the only agency in this county that has it. So therefore they would have to hire either the county or Wash Dot to administer those dollars. And their portion of those dollars isn't significant enough to do that. They're supposed to use them on road projects, but technically, you know, they they do whatever they do, whatever they want with them. I think they do try to use them on road projects. And it's quite a substantial amount when you add it all together, because I think Golden Dale's is close to $160,000. And those are paid directly out of county dollars. We talk about matching landfill dollars. For federal dollars, that's where some of that money ends up going is back to the cities. When we're looking, when we say we use the landfill dollars to match grant dollars. You know, we get the federal dollars, but we still have to pay 13% of those federal dollars. As match, and then we give the cities an additional 5% of the total basically added together. Okay, and those are actually that six, seven and eight, all three cities. Nine is the final item. Number nine is the final acceptance and release of contract bond for West Darlin. Project is complete. Number 10 is the agreement between Clucatac County Public Works and Centerville School District. In case they need us to do some work, you'll see a lot of these over the next few weeks or months as we update all of them. They run on five-year cycles and were to the new five-year cycle. And then there's a local agency consultant agreement with Aspect Consulting for geotechnical services. I mean, pay estimates this week and
We go on to on that aspect. Is that like a new product line for Aspect? Geotechnical, I always, I mean, I always think of them as more water and water related stuff. So that's why when I initially saw it, I thought, oh, that's what we've been talking about.
A lot of their engineers are geotech.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And have we used them before in that capacity?
Have used them before. We actually used them through our structural engineer.
So they were subcontracted?
Yeah, they were subcontracted and we use them. We actually have two geotecs on.
That was my question.
And the reason we do is one is specialized in building and construction. And that that's asked. The other one is specializes in review for they kind of wrote the rules for these green energy projects. So we went ahead and hired their guy a few years ago. We use them. So it's hard for like the solar farms or stuff to say, well, there's no impact.
Right.
They're they're our expert to mitigate or help determine mitigation for the solar farms or the wind farms if they come up.
Is that Tetra Tech?
No, it's G N Northern.
Okay.
We've used them and we have them on board now and they are working with me on Bluebird. As we're working through that permitting process.
Okay, thank you. I was just, I was unaware. I guess I never paid attention. I always thought when I think Aspect, I think all things water hydrology, that kind of stuff. And so I thought, oh, they've added, that makes sense. I mean, they'd have other engineers.
Know they did buildings, so.
Well, they do the geotech for the building, actually, you know, for the substructure surface. And they were, they did a lot of work on Courtney Road. Do our do our structural.
I'm gonna break my, I'm not gonna speak today.
Five minutes.
I know I made it. He had to say something that got piqued my interest. The consultant that you said we use to counteract what the solar and wind say kind of thing. Does that qualify for a consultant that should then have to be reimbursed by the project asking for a permit?
It is reimbursed by the project. Yes, that is correct. They pay for that.
Okay.
So when they want to schedule the meetings and get all to get together with all the people, I'm like, okay, we, I don't know that we're ready. But if you want to pay, I'm fine. I really care, but.
And then you call our guy and okay.
But just the same, up until now, you haven't charged for your time attending those meetings. And that's the direction.
Yeah, that's the direction we got. So we're we're tracking our time. We track all the consultants times. Yes.
And so have you come up with an internal fees? I've been, I mean, I've been thinking about this primarily for Mochi's department. But for yours, like a fee schedule that you can hand to them, like for every hour, this is our expenses, you know, time and benefits and everything.
We are actually working on that, but what we've done with the with the energy companies in the past, we just, you know, because we use cost analysis. So we just job costs, we just print out stuff and say, here's the cost. Just give them the printouts. Pam just actually just makes out a bill. It's a detailed bill. This is all the wages of all the people. And this is their time as opposed to finding a, you know, median and just saying, okay, we're going to charge you this much per hour.
Right. But is that strict wages or is that wages and benefits?
Wages and benefits, the whole package.
All right.
And if we go out and inspect, we charge for our vehicles too.
Yeah, you're probably of all the department, they're probably the most set up.
Yes, we do a lot.
You do all job costing for everything.
Yes.
So it's just like one more thing to job cost.
Yeah, we just put a number in and then it all goes to that number and away we go.
Yeah.
It's pretty good for us. It's it's works really well. On the construction side, the contractor started installing signs on Canyon Road. This is the last phase of that project. Roosevelt Paver, we're still waiting. We're going back and forth, determine a schedule when the contractor will come back for the punch list items. Courtney Road, we're doing some clearing, grubbing roadway X and embankment and they're installing some culverts. I actually put in some pictures just in case you guys get calls. And I've forwarded these to Jeff. And these are what the site looks like. As you can see, you know, they're not running out of control. And I give the contractor credit. He actually hired a couple of the locals that live within the project limits to be fire watch.
Wow.
That was good thinking on his part. Very good thinking. So the one guy that this would most impact is also one of the fire watch guys.
Find it odd that it burned out and they didn't take the excavator back and throw the stuff back on top to burn it.
So they light them. As you could see, that's the pond. There. And that will be the that right now we're using it as a construction, but that will be the permanent location of the pond. For that project.
Was there a pond there before?
What's that?
Was there a pond there before?
No, now there is now though, because we created a lot of impervious surface. So we have to do something with the water.
Is that going to be considered a wetland?
No, it's considered a drainage pond.
Okay.
And you know, it's been
Is it on our land or oh, okay.
The bottom of the big turn then is that where it's at where I see it all cleared out down there?
Yes, exactly. Yeah. So we're required to do that. Now that the wetland we've mitigated with the core. We have one of those too.
Okay.
But that's not one of the same. We also own that property also because I don't blame people. Nobody's going to want that. Okay, the design side. The click attack path. Again, we're still wait. The meeting is being scheduled. The open house is scheduled for the 17th. Courthouse parking lots will be advertising at the end of this month. Small works project is on ad and it will be opened on the 18th for the guardrail. And we did submit the four projects for the bridge, the bridge funding, the grant projects. Those are 100%.
Is that closed now?
Yes.
Do we know how many other people submitted?
No, and they won't let us know now. I mean, we'll hear later. Yeah, now it's trying to top secret.
We could ask our colleagues around the state if they, you know, I'm going to see a bunch of them tomorrow maybe all. So how many projects you put in?
So the pond is further south than where the burn piles were going?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't have it on my video.
Yes, they just put it in not too long ago. So I think it was prior to or after since you flown over.
Well, I did it again.
Oh, okay.
Video so that we can see the change.
Well, that would be nice. They appreciate those.
Yeah.
Okay, maintenance crew, the east end is crack sealing and removing annex one. As you see, we're moving right along and we'll talk about those pictures here in a minute. West end, the crews are brushing the snow area and doing guardrail repair on Centerville Highway. Now we can, now that we're certified, we can start doing a lot more of that bidding, less of it and grading roads. On the facility side, we have the site work. They're pouring curbs this week and they'll be pouring sidewalks next week. We're starting to get that tied up. We just have a few more spots in the flooring. I think we're just about done. The interior, they're working on the window seals now. That's what the lift is sitting in the parking lot for. Is they're coming in and doing some of the seals and some of the stuff on the third floor. So that's why we have the lift there. The blinds, they're actually scheduled this week to our next week to come in and finish the blinds. HVAC, we still have the five locations. It's in it's in their mechanical, the mechanical engineers hands to come up with the solution. The weed, we have the doors have been painted and the glass goes in tonight. Other thing I wanted to mention, if anybody smelt anything, I was here last night, they went around and cleaned with paint thinner. It was last night. It was really strong. This morning, I think it was some residual because I might stayed a little too long. So I kind of smelled it when I came in and I had to ask people, are you still smelling this or is it just me? That's just you. So I don't know if we got any complaints. I didn't
You regain consciousness, you still smell.
It was pretty strong because they were literally you know, they would get paid up in the sea, you know, on the woods. So they were just taking the paint and just rolling the paint thinner on.
Oh, my goodness.
It was poked. But it looks like they got everything cleaned up. They may, there may be one more dose of that this evening. We told absolutely not and get in here as soon as you can. So we get the longest amount of period for it to dissipate. And we turn up the units to to help get rid of the smell. As far as the other stuff and the demo has started and I put these pictures in here now, this one reason I put this one in here, this is, this is one of the vaults and you could see the floor is concrete. This used to have tile on it. And the tile was the asbestos because I had somebody run to me yesterday when we just started. And say, I can't believe you're releasing all that asbestos into the atmosphere. You're going to kill me. I said, well, no, no, there isn't any asbestos. That's not true. Said, yes, it's true. We abated all the asbestos. It was just in the floor tiles. It's not anywhere else that dust you see is concrete dust. And we're spraying it with water. And then the other picture is the demo. And I was really surprised with this, and this isn't a good picture. I have a better picture, but yeah, you could look exactly the those main beams, those main concrete beams that went on the edge, they had no rebar.
Really?
And what I thought, what we thought were concrete columns with brick facing were not, they were just brick. So when they put that excavator in there, it just went right through the brick wall like it was nothing. And when they, because we were concerned, we went in and I wanted, we, I got here yesterday, we went through it and said, okay, don't attack the columns. You got to go between them. Because I don't want you to, you know, I don't want the the whole thing to come out as one unit. We, it'd be a heck of a thing trying to get that thing out of there and one of a mess. So they went between them and then when they got underneath the beam and then above the beam. But the toughest thing was the parapet wall was all one, wanted to be one big unit. But outside of that, they went under the beam and then he grabbed the beam, beam just broke at the joints. So structurally, it wasn't, if you were in the middle of the building, you've been okay. Like somebody said, if this was California, we wouldn't have to worry about here.
Yeah.
It fell down.
Long time ago.
Yeah, if you were in the middle of the building, you were fine because, you know, those those steel columns and those wood beams are those they're sad. They're not going. They weren't going anywhere. You could tear everything down. Matter of fact, you could, that's why we could tear it at sections because you could go to those and then that's a perfect stopping point.
Or are you pulling those wood beams off and set them aside or anything? Or are you just trying to just munch them up?
They're they're spliced too. I mean, they're not one solid beam. And we we saved some of them, but they don't save very well. We tried saving the steel columns. They're just, it's just so hard to save that stuff. It would be nice to save it. I'd love to have, you know, the decking itself is that that plywood decking. That's some nice stuff, but you know, you just, you can't do anything. You'd be there forever. So that's the story of annex one. It should be, it should be down complete and gone by the middle of next week. And we'll leave the pile of brick. Those are disintegrating, but there are some as they get to ground, they just poof, yeah, dust.
Are are you having, are we having issues as far as getting containers?
Nope. Landfills worked really well with us. We we actually don't even have to haul it all the way up the hill. We haul it down to the reload.
And they haul it up the hill.
Yeah, they swap out containers.
Wow.
How many containers do we have earmarked for this project?
We have, we have two trucks, our two containers, and then the two chassis and you pay for the and then we just trade out the containers. I mean, they have more containers, whatever container they have available at the reload, we just go and they throw a new
Is it their truck or our truck?
They're, one of them is our truck. The chassis are theirs. We rent the chassis from them. We don't have those. But the actual trucks, one of them is ours, one of them we rent. They won't, they don't give us the trucks because they don't really have that many themselves. They use a lot of contract stuff. Oh, yeah, we take them in, they swap them out and it's back over here again. It's a pretty quick operation.
How long ago did we put in for those containers? Because we heard from a citizen that said, saying they've been waiting for a container for months.
Are we have 20 footers or 40 footers?
80 footers.
You have 80 footers. This person
These are the big roll offs.
This person wants a 40 and all they can get is one.
Oh, I thought he couldn't get any.
No, they 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 keep offering him twenties and he doesn't want that major for the dog.
Yeah, these are the big, the big ones.
Thank you for double checking on that.
That sit on there. They have a special chassis.
Right. 80 foot. That's a big turning radius in town.
I would say, yeah, nothing made it there.
Yeah, it's, it's, I mean, we can get a man, we can jackknife and then the trucks turn pretty sharp. But yes, okay, we'll move on. HVAC units at the courthouse have been, the networking's complete, riffs are scheduled to this week to remove the old curbs. We talked about this and nothing's changed at the Pioneer Center. Dispatch sound insulation scheduled to begin next Monday night. And the rough in electric started yesterday at the remodel. And we'll finish next week. And we have some plumbers coming through. We actually were able to round a few of them up. To get of give us bids. On SADIS, we're scheduled to start clearing next week. I got to be able to get the geotech in there. And the only way I can do that is get the brush off there, get the brush out of the way. So we'll start there. Other follow-up issues, home and garden went well from what, you know, it was great turnout and everything worked well from what we've heard. There's a walk for life this Saturday at the courthouse lawn. And that's, that's all we have.
What is the walk for life?
That's a good question. It's an event that they that they do and they kind of, they do it every year. And I want to be careful because I'm not really sure. I don't want to get it.
Who is they?
I have that off to figure out. That's, that's what I'm, it's either that or it's a pro. I don't think it's pro-life. I think it might be breast. I'm pretty sure. I think you're right. I think you're right. It's breast cancer. You are correct. Because this is that month, so.
Yeah.
Yes, that's, that is right. Thank you, Lee. That is correct. I don't pay that close attention to those outside.
Any questions for Jeff? I would just like to say, thank you for everything you're having to do because I know Gordy is in the orals and has spent a great amount of time working for the county for the bridge replacement process for pick choosing the RBMC group. And Jeff's had to pick up all the slack. So thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
I actually do have one before he disappears since we're talking about trucks and containers. If this board so chooses later on in life to figure out some county system for drop boxes for code compliance type of apparatus, you're saying we only have one county truck available and it would have to fit into our scheme?
It's our Lloyd, it's our low boy tractor trailer is what we use. So yeah, we only, because we don't use it that often. So that's, I mean, we low boy equipment back and forth, but it is, it's, we try to plan our stuff. So we don't spend a lot of money moving the thing back and forth. And it's, it's been around a long time. I mean, it's an older vehicle, but again, it doesn't get compared to some of the other stuff. It doesn't get that much use. But yes, you could, we could use that to move it with. You would still need to get the chassis that you load, that you load the thing on.
Right.
So are you thinking in terms of us doing our own abatements and such?
No, I'm thinking of, you know, you have a carrot and you have the stick and you got some of these people like the one that we keep hearing about every week. But I think they have drop boxes full of stuff. But only have a Toyota pickup to go to the transfer station and it just doesn't get done. So if the county wanted to have a carrot, they could actually, if if Republic would work with us and provide a box. That the county could go throw out there, the people could then fill the box and we could alleviate the problem in a quick and less painful way. So I'm having some conversations with the landfill and I was just chewing that one out. When I flush out more information, I will let you all know.
How, I mean, how would we get beyond the gift of public funds and all that?
That's the question of that one.
I mean, if we can find a way to do it, we've got to become creative to get these things cleaned up. Otherwise, everything's going to just be abatement.
Say whether we pay 40,000 to do it or whether we pay 200 for drop box, you know.
I guess the difference is, is if we pay 40,000, we also have a lien on the property. And so we're, we're paying upfront, but we're supposed to get our money back.
I just want to flush out that it's even a possibility before I go farther than that.
Thank you and keep, keep up the good work in my opinion.
Just to on that, so you said though, the chassis, we rented that or borrowed that from
What we did is is
Because I know, because I've never, I mean, my, I've never dealt with the 80 yard. It's only the 40s and I just have contracted, you know, Republic brings the thing out, drops it off, we load all the stuff, they come pick it up, haul it off. So I'm
We've done that and we did that with the house, but I don't really like that because we don't have control. I know that sounds kind of strange, but
No, no, I totally get that.
Way we can work our own schedule.
I didn't even know that was an option.
And we did it. Things have changed a little bit. When we did the stuff, if you remember when we did the click attack mill site. We did it for free. I mean, we were able to, you know, things have changed quite a bit, but we got, we, we got the two trailers and we dumped for free. Now, I don't know what they're charging us to dump, but but they did give us the the trucks and the chassis are the the boxes and the chassis, they're two separate things for free for the first three days. And then after that, it's $50 a day per chassis and then per
Oh, that's pretty much free.
Yeah, it's a good deal. Don't get me wrong. They still, they still work with us very well.
And my plan is to try to work out some kind of an agreement before we do any kind of contract negotiation.
Aren't you already in the middle of that?
Yeah, we're starting.
We can add an amendment.
Sure. Okay.
But now they've been, don't get me wrong. They've been good to work with it. We have a good working relationship with, and we work with them a lot on, you know, Roosevelt Grade Road, other items. So
They've been guarantee of the $50 a day for the truck or the chassis and that's
I don't think people get that.
No, I can tell you, I've never gotten that. And I thought what I, you know, I have paid just the regular commercial rate that everybody does. And it's actually, I always felt it's pretty reasonable really for, you know, you dispose of a house and it's, you know, it's a couple thousand dollars total. That seems really cheap.
They just have a shortage of drivers. So I was trying to take that out of the equation. Or at least have option B or, you know, every time they come with an ask, we should have an ask back to fill their asks. So.
Well, I mean, just the same though, if their drivers are not driving on our project, that means they're available to go drive for citizens' projects, which, you know, frees that up. So
Yes, exactly.
Us doing it. And it gives us the ability to be on our time schedule.
Yes, that's exactly why we do it.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much, Jeff. Jeff King, were you here just to hear about that part with your part of that part? Are you going to be able to do this at the same time and continue, you know, the install while also providing services at the level of expectation?
I have a question on a side note. Active 911.
Active Alert now?
Well, the whatever they changed their name to.
I'll get it.
Centerville School had a fire alarm last night.
That's correct.
And that phone went out six times probably. It's like every time they, I mean, most of us were just watching because the people close went investigated. But every time there was a new update, oh, not smelling anything, not nothing. It's the alarms going back off again. Is that normal, common?
That is a user selectable option. You should talk to your fire department or your fire districts.
It's probably in settings and I can probably go.
I don't, we don't actually contract with them. That's each individual fire agency has their own account with Active Alert. So I don't know if it's an individual user or a system administrator for your district. But someone, if you can't do it personally through your device, which I don't think so, I think it has to be done at your admin level. Whoever controls that app.
I mean, I don't mind it going off again if they're needing more trucks, needing more people, but if it's just an update.
That's one of the pros and cons to that service is that last I knew it was either or. You either only get the initial notification and that's it, or you get every time the cat is updated.
Minutes for the next hour.
Every time a truck goes in route or anything is updated. Yes.
Okay.
But that is all on the fire department or districts. But that is all on, uh, the fire department or districts admin side of that service that you pay for.
Maybe it's just normally in my pocket and I don't hear it when it's going off non-stop, but.
And it's something they could have changed because a lot of the fire agencies are, you know, experimenting with what works best for them still. And now just to make sure everybody knows that, that those were false alarms. There's a faulty uh, sensor in the fire alarm system at the school and they're still dealing with that.
Alright.
We, we won't set those off anymore unless it's an actual fire.
Any questions for Jeff, uh, with regards to SADUS or Jeff from Jeff? Jeff and Jeff on SADUS, um, did you guys work out, um, how many batteries, all that? Do we have that? We've got all that lined up. Alright. Good work, gentlemen. Okay, next up, we have Clicky Tech County Fair Board President Ron. Eric, the fair update.
Would anybody like a hard copy of the map?
I just pulled it up. I'm good.
Okay. Yep.
Oh, I thought it was on it.
No, this is, uh, this is. The entire theme winner.
We picked my therapy. Wow, party till the cows.
That's your thing? I've got mine sitting right here. Thank you.
I want tickets to the fair.
Yeah. No, that worked out pretty good. It was fun to see.
That's good. I like it.
Yeah, I would have voted.
Alright. Party till the cows come home? Or let's party until the cows come home?
Did, uh, did any of the horse people get upset over that?
I don't know. I turned in like seven or eight.
No, no, they.
Really? He wanted it when.
I guess. No, I just, I kept going on with things and then something else would pop in and like, ooh. And then I'd go back to doing what I was doing and something else would pop in.
Yeah, there was about twenty suggestions and it was really good to do it that way.
I don't five of them anyway.
So anyhow, uh, just for the record, Ron, I read president of the fair board, just here to give a update. Uh, I'd like to start, the first part is our long range plan. Uh, Fairport accepted last meeting. This is our long range plan and I wanted to make sure I brought it to the board. Uh, to get feedback, make sure we're all on the same page. Uh, been working with, uh, county road departments help, uh, for H started in the process. Uh, and then county road help finished and did, did this. The number one priority was getting a uh, space for the sale area. And number two priority was, uh, expanding RV parking. Uh, we pretty much focused on where to have a sale facility. Uh, we went through about probably twelve versions. Uh, ended up with this, uh, basically was a new livestock barn. Basically two fifty by seventy. Uh, it basically taken the Cameron livestock barn and just kind of mirroring it. Uh, taking the miniature horses where they're at now and then moving them between barn A and B. Cause that's what's there right now is the miniature horse by the sidewalk. Uh, then we also talked about putting the new fair office in the southeast corner of that facility. So we could have electrical and so forth for the sale. That's kind of the major part, uh, south of the Joan Fry is where they designated if we're gonna have additional RV electrical hookups be south of the Joan Fry indoor arena. We had talked about the new property to the west. Uh, but this was looked at a better location. So that's just kind of a quick, uh.
If I may, Mr. Chair.
Please.
Um, the future RV, I mean, I know, um, hopefully there was some consideration. I don't know if that, the site south of the, the Joan Fry Arena. I know there's, there's issues out that the ground is not the best out at the fairgrounds as far as for putting utilities and whatnot. Is that area, it's like I'm, I'm not familiar. I mean, is that a decent area for, are we gonna have to blast all the, the basalt to get the.
That was more of the concern going to the west.
Right, I know, that's.
That was more of the concern there.
That's basalt with three inches of.
The good part about here is there is a power pole.
Okay.
Right in the middle by the sand shed on the west side. So in order to service electrically underneath, I, I really can't answer that. I know when we dug or did the original RV park in two phases, we didn't have to blast any on the north side of the Joan Fry. Uh, so I'm not really sure.
And then, well, I guess what I'm looking for is just, was there consideration as far as the, you know, that we, we don't want to have to have any pump stations or anything like that as far as, you know, when you start putting those utilities in the ground, you gotta think about where are they going? And we like gravity.
And that was.
Gravity's cheap and it works all the time.
Why we're considering, uh, trying to come up with a long range plan now, since we're gonna be, county is gonna be looking at replacing the water line.
Alright.
Through there, kind of give an idea where we wanted to try to put stuff. Uh, I'm not.
There was some, there was some blasting that went on with the water line. That's what's prompting the, the question. Yeah, the query.
I was wondering is if there was any test drilling.
No, we, we did.
By the tent camping area, north by the RV that's already there or down south in that parking lot.
Yeah, we, we, the only consideration we talked about was
layout.
The rock to the west because we said, really, our third issue was park, you know? And this is be taken parking. We're already using a lot of this for camping now during the fair, uh, dry camping. But we did not take that in consideration of, uh.
Just to give you adequate handicap spots if you're only using that south of the livestock barn for handicap.
Yes, with us, probably build more. We didn't really talk about the old fair building, what to do with, or fair office, you know, whether that, what to do with that facility, whether that needed to go away in time, additional parking there or what? It was pretty interesting. Like I said, this, well, this was a couple of years. But to get the fair board and we didn't even designate what animals might go in the new facility. We didn't even want to go there. You know, as well as the design of the building. Uh, our goal would be working on the building first, working on what grants can we find to match with our funds to build the facility. So we have money left over for additional projects and not use all our duly funds just on the building itself. Yeah, so there's gonna be a lot of discussion. I, I am assuming it'd be pretty open to start with. And then look at further design down the road, whether we want it closed in, you know, start maybe with concrete open. Uh, fair office in the corner, uh, with electrical, et cetera. And then work on the design down the road. Uh, do we want it more closed in, more open? I was happy we got to this point uh, with the board.
I'm noticing on here, there's a RV dump station.
Yes.
Does the RV, current RV spaces not have a dump station?
No. Uh, good point because it'd be nice to put it closer to the RV. What is this right here?
Oh, that's just a covered, that's what he's talking about where the new building is. That's where the little, little tiny horses end up.
Yeah, the miniature, the miniature horses are there. So that's where we're gonna move between our name and B.
Yeah, it's like just a covered lean to.
Yeah.
Oh, and you can just pick it up and move it.
No, we'll remove it and build, build new. I think we'll do the same as you.
Three walls and a roof.
A big drop box. You know, when I was trying to put the stuff kind of all together. So the green grass would be between the building for show still. Probably end up losing the sidewalk just to fit it in there. But the main goal is try to get this done before you guys went through and redid the water line in the fairgrounds.
So what about that, if you put that new livestock building there, right through that road, did you need that road to get inside the, coming into the main arena there? Or what was that purpose of that road that went in there?
We don't really use that road.
Okay.
They used to use it when it was horse races.
Oh.
Uh, used to be, but now it's just pretty much horses coming in and out and pedestrian traffic. So that's where, kind of on the north side, we kind of put a future wash rack. You know, not knowing what size for what animals, just kind of put a placement. Uh, the main goal was, would it fit in there if we did it? And it does. Like I said, at the bottleneck, it's twelve and a half feet, so. Like I said, the main goal is, okay, if it's the building is moving forward on finding funds for that. Using our funds additional, hopefully have funds left over for future projects. Is our goal. So.
So what's, what's your expectation? How far out before you want to start building this?
Well, I think it probably takes a couple of years just for financing. I, I told the board realistically, it'd probably be five years by the time we had it built. Uh, it seems like every time we get in the fall to something, uh, I'd like to ask permission to continue working with public works, uh, so we could kind of get into a design. Uh, get an estimate out. So have an idea of what we're going out for on bids.
You want to wait until after the crash before you ask those? Is those costs?
I would prefer to. Cause right now it doesn't seem to be a good time.
Yeah.
But at least if we could start doing our design in the next year.
Okay.
And then be looking down the road, uh, at grant money at the same time. I mean, if we could at least get four or five hundred thousand dollars towards it, I think we could pull the trigger on it. As we're figuring this can be a little bit of money. But we, we need to focus on what, what duly had set that money aside for. And it's to improve the facilities, so.
So it's showing here thirty-five, um, RV spots. How many of those spots are currently used for RVs on the dry camping side?
That's a good question.
Me.
Last year wasn't as many. I, I think there was one like twenty RVs, where less RVs last year than two years ago or back. I, I'd have to get that answer and get back to you.
And is there a price differential on the people that are dry camping versus in the RV?
Yeah.
And do they like that price difference?
Yes, there is, uh, much more demand with, for the RV sites than dry camping. And we have to turn people away every year.
Yeah, if you can, if you can take electrical hookups for an added five or ten dollars in the summer and run your air conditioner.
Versus your generator?
Versus trying to run air conditioner off generator.
Yeah, and you know, and then that's a good discussion to have. All we have is water and electrical at the original. The goal wasn't to be long term. Uh, you made a good point. We really ought to have a dump station out by the RVs instead of.
If there's a pipe anywhere nearby.
To drive, yeah. So there's still a lot more design and more than happy, uh, for suggestions.
No, I was just thinking because that bath, bathrooms are right over there.
Yeah.
So there's gotta be a.
Sewer to that point.
It's gotta be something that you can almost put a dump station in that little corner by the bathroom for those guys too, so.
Because the logistics from where the RV dump is now, basically everybody has to wait till everybody clears out after the fair to go to that location because it's, and then you gotta get turned around to go back out because that one corner is just not. To go out, so. No, I was quite pleased, uh, Fairbird finally came to a consensus. Uh, it took quite a bit of time.
I can imagine.
Well, to get thirteen people to, and, and then if everybody's not involved, new people come in and then we all have different ideas and.
It's like herding chickens.
And, yeah, like I said, we hadn't really got into what the building will look like. Cause I know that'll be all new, but right now just an overall structure with a roof. Uh, so that's our main focus will be. Oh, speaking of camping, Erica takes care of camping, so maybe she could answer that question.
She was probably listening.
I was.
No, I appreciate.
Okay, so last year we had eighty-eight campers and average year is about a hundred and twenty to a hundred and thirty-five.
Oh, wow.
And how many do you have to turn away that one RV connects?
Well, looking at this, you're gonna look, it's, you know, some years it's ninety that do not get electrical hookup. So in an average time, we have it on a rotation. So you get it every two years is our plan, but right lately, it's been every three.
So you don't, so you don't think there'd be any issues if it was, if, if we build it, they will come as.
Oh, absolutely.
The question is, is how long is it gonna take to pay it off?
Right.
What, what do all the people do that don't, I mean, not a busy year, you're saying you would build both of these? What, where was overflow go at that point?
So overflow goes up to, uh, by the racehorse barns as well as to the east part of where it says grass area, tent camping. That is our normal overflow area.
North one or the south one, grass area?
Both.
Both, yep.
How many tent campers do we have?
Um, I would say an average year, probably anywhere between five to ten.
It's hot.
Yeah.
And it's rocky ground. I got that that last year is, why couldn't you put in the spot that wasn't so bumpy? And I'm like, good luck.
Yeah, so, so the goal would be to get the building constructed. Us to help find a grant, help pay for that, have some money left over. Next priorities, RV parking, spend some of that money toward that too. That's the top two priorities I heard from the fair board that they would like to see.
No, I like it.
I appreciate, I just wanted to make sure we're all on the same page, then say, oh, this is what we're gonna go out and get funded and the board says, what's going on here? Where are you guys headed? We'll get the fund. Yeah, yeah. If, like I say, if we could find about a third of the funding, I think we'll pull the trigger and move forward. And the state seems to have a little more funding now for fairs, so hopefully we can go after some of that.
Are you gonna apply for funding for the design?
Probably not.
Okay.
Probably not on that hand. Cause that seems like that then becomes for sure a year of process time we apply for it.
Oh, yeah.
Receive it and then for, I, I think financially we're okay or we could do that out or all.
Okay.
But of course I'm thinking thirty, forty-five thousand dollars too, if it's a lot more than that. And that's a different answer.
Right. So I, I'm not seeing if Jeff is nodding or going, yeah, right.
Oh, no. A lot of the water projects I had been involved with, that's what we did, apply for the funding for the.
Right, design.
Design.
Engineering.
Engineering, et cetera, et cetera. And then you take that. The problem with that is time you get that engineering estimate, then you go to bid and then time you go to build, engineering estimate's already off by twenty percent.
Yeah.
Time you get to that point.
Uh, that'll be the case for the next couple of years until the crash that we all think is coming and then things will be cheap.
Yeah, so I look, it'll probably be a couple of years before we get to this. And then hopefully things settle out. Uh, so that's kind of the long range plan. Uh, I wanted to talk a little bit, we did a request for proposals for a kickoff dinner. Instead of doing that with volunteers, uh, we decided to, uh, put out a request for proposals. Uh, we did receive one bid, which was from Seabirds Meats. Uh, and we, uh, Fairboard did award that to Seabirds. Uh, we have, we are in discussion. We have, we are in discussion about doing a dessert with volunteers and probably look at volunteers to serve that. So we're still in that discussion stage. Like Seabird said, they do the meals. They don't just do dessert.
I just tell Logan not to run out of meat.
Yes. So that was good that we moved forward on that. Get that done. Uh, for admissions this year, we're still looking forward to doing sponsorship, still try to do like what we did last year. Which we had a free fair days on Thursday, Friday, and then Saturday, Sunday, we charged five dollar rate for everybody. Uh, so if we could find the sponsorships this year, we'd like to move forward with that. I do need to have ticket. Or counters because we need to count the people that comes through the gates just for our fair, Washington State Fair Association. Uh, numbers. So that's kind of the direction we're moving towards.
As any of our green energy projects. Or solar projects out in Bickleton ever donated or sponsored to the fair and is the fair interested in reaching out to them? I think I think they would be um happy to join. If you would be willing to have them.
No, I don't. More of the mayor. Yeah, no, that's that's good idea. We actually had a good number for beef pre-show. There's about sixty-two stairs. So we're up from the past. That hog swine pre-show yesterday was about mid-fifties, a little less. So that was down a little bit on the. Swine, but up on the beef. Uh, as far as emissions in the past, uh, last year, we were better than twenty nineteen. Twenty twenty-one was better than twenty nineteen numbers, but not as good as some of the years in the past. I I think this will be a better year. Last year, I mean, it was kind of like, we're gonna have a fair, but what is it gonna look like? You know, this year, we plan for a normal fair.
Say if the home and garden show is any indication, you're gonna be busy this year.
Yeah, it was quite a few people. Yeah, I was up there.
It was like record numbers.
Yeah. So that's what I'm hoping and try to get admissions reasonable. That'll even add to it. So. That's pretty much I have unless the board has any questions or anything. I just thank Erica for coming in on the RVs.
All right. Well, let's uh let's party till the cows come home.
Yeah. Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ron.
I do want to put a pitch in for the um peach cobbler to be the dessert. Well, it's some of both is fine. I don't care.
Actually, speaking with Leslie this morning, that's exactly what she was talking about.
Okay, good.
Talking to.
No, but that's good. We're thinking alike.
Talking to gump orchards again on the donation of the peaches and then buying the ice cream and.
Yeah.
Getting the volunteers to put it together and then volunteers to serve it.
Yeah.
Try to keep some volunteer base.
Yeah, I think that's good.
Yes.
You can always go volunteer to serve food.
Volunteering you. That's what volunteering is all about.
Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you all.
Thanks, guys.
All right. Being as it, we are early. Uh, let's move into some board pending. You got a list over there today?
I should have.
While he's looking.
If you're if you're ready before I am, go for it.
Um. I would. I'm gonna meet with Jeff this afternoon, go over the latest um. Meeting I had with the PUD about the wastewater plant in Dallesport.
They give you a spreadsheet.
Did you give me a spread? It is, but it's it's mostly the the thing that's most, um, I think relevant is actually. The we hired. So when we're doing the the um system plan update. So we hired the engineering firm went to look and then that was also out of that plan came that they looked at the options for Murdoch and which, you know, I don't see us. Pulling the trigger on any time in in my lifetime likely, but maybe I don't know. But out of that, so again, these are there. The the numbers that we're working with are the numbers that we got. And the the discussion is over the um. The. Updates or maintenance that the engineering firm came over the next ten to twenty years and kind of what the game plan is for that, what those. You know, the cost and they had estimated the costs with some inflation. Um, so that, you know, that the next, the kind of the next big ticket, there's something that needs to be done in the next two or three years. And then there's something out in year six, and then there's something in year ten. So with those numbers and then, you know, we're trying to get the um. To understand that the rate base in Dallesport. At its current where it's at will not support those, it won't fund those. Those capital expenditures. It doesn't matter who owns the system. That's the problem. As far as when you look at the numbers over time, the. Cause you want the system to pay its own way. And so we have been running two or three different scenarios of well, how how do we make this work? How do how does this work? And is it, you know, do you do a one time where you catch up? And then, because we're right now, we're on a, we have been on a three percent annual inflator on the. The sewer rates, which are still there. They're basically the sewer rates in Dallesport are. Cause the PUD has five other systems. And so I had asked them for that as far as like what what are the rates in the other systems? How are these set up? You know, Dallesport's nothing anymore. You know, it's not, it shouldn't be more special than any other system. And so there um, there are other five systems that average. They're all roughly about in the same place and Dallesport, it's about ten dollars a month under the lowest one. That's. That's kind of the delta that's missing.
Add some to the lowest one. Just do a rate change this last year?
Wait, three percent?
But didn't go up to the bigger number?
No, I mean, it's so it goes up three percent each. So one of the scenarios we looked at was, well, you do. You do a ten ten dollar uh. Per month increase.
How much delta does that make?
Then then if you do that, if you do that, and then you you can stay on the three percent. And it will, it will cash flow, it will work, it will pay if you, because my idea was like, well, if the plan says this has to be replaced in. Two years, maybe we can wait three years to build some cash so that it's the system solvent. And we looked at, we looked at different, you know, don't do ten dollars, do five percent over the next. And how does how does that work out? And so. You know, we ran all the numbers.
Ten dollars under all the rest.
Right, we can't catch up.
You've been subsidizing.
Yeah, we have been. Right. And so again, it doesn't really make a difference who owns it.
They're gonna do that ten dollars anyway.
There. Well, that's the thing is the PUD is basically their position, and I don't think I'm telling tales, is that they're not gonna do like that if there needs to be a rate. Adjustment to make the system solvent permanently. They're not doing, we, they're not taking it until that's set up and done.
Oh, they don't want the thing until we take the burn.
Right. So that's their point of view because they're, and again, we need to be, I I totally understand, they're under no obligation to take it. It's not, it's ours and.
They want, they want it for free and us to.
Yes.
Wants capital asset for free.
And the, so that that's one of the the numbers that I I and I want to get an understanding. As far as on the engineering, that's why I want to talk to Jeff about the, you know, how much and again, it cash flows with the biggest problem. Is that there is a big assumption that the FTE count that um. The current plan, our permit needs to be updated. That's the part I really need some clarity on. Is that actually true? Cause that's in the engineering is that you have to like our our permit for the operation of that facility. Has an expiration and then you have to renew it. And when you renew it. Ecology gets another shot at, oh, here's this stuff. So there's a bunch of unknown. Liability in there potentially and the engineering firm had estimated. That to be compliant with the most current that system, it would take another one and a half F or at least one FTE addition. That completely blows up the the budget. It won't, like we can. With the, you can reset the rates, do the ten dollars and go back to a three percent annual inflator. In um. A three percent annual inflator. And if you don't have to add. Um, FTE for operations, it'll work. It'll work indefinitely as far as the rates from what at least out ten years, which is really about the window of what.
And are you assuming growth in there during that?
Yes, although and I would say their their numbers to me seem a little low.
Of course.
As far as the growth, as far as the new connections and the um. Uh, what that would generate, because that would change it too, but not the FTE, because the the labor costs will will kill us or kill anybody that's running that system. If that's really true.
How many additional homes could that thing support? I I mean, because it's running at what thirty, forty percent capacity?
It's, yeah, I mean, it's up. I think we've got capacity. Um, I want to say without a major. There's, there's several hundred. Um. Yeah.
Plus our business part, plus all the other stuff.
If that it has without any major and then that it has the capacity to be expanded, it was built so that they could add a second module, which would be a. Another couple of million bucks probably to to put a second, but way cheaper than building another wastewater plant. So um. So that's kind of where I'm at now. We've run the, I mean, I I agree with the numbers as far as the rates and the, but the pieces that change it are the labor and the. How? The capital cost for those um things, how realistic are those and are those? Is that if you can have anything you want, would you put that in there or not?
Or is this, yeah, is this need or want?
Exactly. And that's what I need some, but it was our, I mean, it was not them, it was our person.
I mean, if this is the this system, another one and a half FTEs, what about every other system?
Right.
And the impact on there? I mean, there's no way.
Right. Well, and that's I'm not sure if um.
Have we, did the private consultant we had that looked at this, did he, was he? Under guidance to look at it as far as um. Value. Um, what what it's worth on the market, what these numbers, because not that I don't trust the PUD. Um, but they're looking at it from one side, their side and which of course is, you know, we expect three houses to be built in the next forty years.
Right.
You know, kind of a scenario and not a private. Look. Um, or a private estimate. I mean, I guess.
I think the concern, and that's what I want to confirm, the concern from the engineering side of things is that. You could do nothing. You can defer a bunch of stuff and you will get away with it for a while. And so the concern was if we. Either the investments don't get made or we say we do a RFP or something and we go out and we have somebody else come in and they operate it. At a um, you know, generate a profit, say from the asset or something like that, you could probably make that work for, you know, a few years for a while. But then when at the end, when it doesn't and you haven't made those investments into the system. Now there's like this huge bill that's got to be done and the rates, you haven't been putting money aside or paying for those capital as you go. And so from a.
Imagine somebody that comes in and buys it is not going to.
Well, nobody's gonna buy.
Look at.
I mean, I don't see that.
Look at the. Rates and not try to fix some of that first first thing. To make it pencil out better.
The rates have to be fixed for anybody.
Right, right. And I think that's the bottom line I'm getting to is the rates have to be fixed regardless of. Doesn't matter if it's the PUD, a third party, or the county continues, which I mean, I'm not, I would say for myself, I have my my position has. Evolved where I'm less like it's the the issue that I'm interested in is that it is sustainably and it pays its own way. As far as we whether we the for my, the thing about getting rid of it was all about, I don't want to pay for it. I'm done paying for it.
Future capital costs.
I don't write. And so the system needs to stand on its own, no matter who owns it, that's that's got to be fixed.
Right. But that's my worry is if if we go as a board and raise the rates ten bucks, which not that I'm opposed to that. But then whoever say goes out to RFP and whoever uh wins that and gets awarded says, no, it needs to be an extra three dollars, then. They say just let them come up with the number and and make the number that suits their needs to make.
Are you, but you saying we will continue to own it?
No, I'm saying whoever owns it. Can adjust the rates to where they feel it needs to be the pencil out.
But again, I mean, you've got millions and millions of dollars of assets sitting there in the ground between all the pipe and the unit. And you know, all that, can you just go out for an RFP and give that to somebody?
Right.
Without it being another public.
Public agency. Yeah, I don't think you can unless you're getting. Cause you would be, you'd have to get something for all that, even though in a practical standpoint. Yeah, I I mean, maybe, I don't know. That's again, I'm still crunching the numbers.
That I've heard interest from the wastewater plant on the other side of the river. And I've heard interest in ownership from the Dallas Port Waters. And then, you know, of course, the PUD is always expected ownership.
Right.
Well, good job.
Okay, I'm I'm working on it. So I'm gonna, I mean, I'll, in in the end, all we're gonna do is we're gonna come back. I'm just gonna bring the information and we're gonna have to figure out, because the in the end, the ball is on our court. It's like, it's ours. We own it and it's not this notion that somebody is.
Track to get rid of it this budget cycle?
We're on track to, we don't have. Um, any um capital, no dollars going into it.
Right, but ideally. I would like it off our books by the end of the calendar year.
Right, if that's again, if that's the decision that the board wants to make. So yes, that is certainly the goal.
This process is is slow enough. I wanted to make sure that we weren't. To being so slow that we can't get rid of it this year if the board so chooses.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, um, I guess I can give my update and that is. We had a meeting with, uh, this is regarding the uh Porta Hood River and the bridge. And uh my co-chair and I of the Bridge Replacement Group met with our federal lobbyists. And um, we were talking about making a trip back to DC to meet with um our representatives and others. About coming up with the third of the funding for the. Uh, federal side of it, about a hundred and seventy-five million dollars. And the lobbyist said, well, are you going to apply for the first round of all these grant programs? There's a rural grant program and a bridge grant program and all these other things. And uh, we've been so focused on Washington and creating and we hadn't been told and we went, what grant program wins the deadline? And number, why didn't you tell? And uh, and he said, oh, it's, uh, I think it's May twenty-seventh or something. And we said, oh, well, how much should we ask for? And um. Uh, yes, absolutely. We want to uh apply. And so um, the goal is, uh, we're having WSC, the WSC, the consultant. That does a lot of that stuff is hopefully getting started on this because we're also working on this RBC contract right now. And so we're gonna slap it all on them and say. Write the grant for a hundred and seventy-five. The feds are kind of like, just apply once and we'll figure out what we can get from one box. And so my hope is, is that if we can get the grant in, put in towards it, then we'll go back. Put in towards it, then we'll go back in July, meet with everybody and the transportation committees and everything and. Sit down and say like, look, we've actually applied, cause I don't want to go back there and be like, hey, give us money. And they're like, well, did you apply? And you're like, well, we can. Uh, and it sounds like Washington and Oregon and a lot of the states that want these big ass won't be ready this year. So it seems like this is the time to get in and get it going. Um, and so I said, well, whatever we need to do, letters of support, let us know. So I wanted to talk to you gentlemen and say, um, yes, we will write a letter of support for this grant proposal. Um, we don't know exactly what, what it needs to say yet, but we want to be able to write it and then I can sign it so that we can get this off.
Has there been any, yeah, no, I'm fine with that. Has there been any? Um, conversations with Murray or Kentwell or Butler or whoever else to um. Put an earmark or a piece of pork in the infrastructure bill that passed?
Well, so, so it's already passed. So that's the dollars that are flowing, the billions and billions of dollars that are flowing. And so our goal is, is to get the application in, to go back, meet with all the legislators.
We try to get an actual earmark for the bridge in there.
They didn't do many, hardly any earmarks. No, there were no earmarks for our bridge in it. Um, so far we've been successful, cause right now we're gonna be sitting better than most other projects because we can say. Washington has already committed 75 million to this. If you show up with your 175 million, then we can go Browby, Oregon to give their portion. And now we've got the two on the, on the one, they're gonna have to come to the table. And then we can come back in later years, both federal and state and ask for more. So the closer we get to 500. The less revenue bonds we're gonna have to take out. And uh, and so the 75 million, um, the, that's gonna put us way up at the top. Because when you're coming up with that kind of, of match, that looks really good.
Yeah, cause it means what that tells them is that this is a real project. Somebody, cause it's really, it's really hard to get those first dollars because nobody wants to be. They're like, oh, you come back when you are done, except you need just the, the gap and we'll, we'll do that. And it's like. That's no, we need the first dollar, which we have now. Get the, yeah. So 75 million out of Oregon ought to be easy. Rob could, he could get that by the, he'll, he'll take, he could have that by the end of the day.
Just pull up the checkbook, Rob.
Yeah.
He's probably got Kate Brown's number on speed dial. He can just call the governor.
Katie?
He calls her Katie.
Okay. Well, good, that's so.
So that's, that's where we're going there, so.
As a consultant, I mean, they feel like they can get something together by the 26th.
They will. Because the consultant. This like, I mean, I know we've been really busy, a lot's going on, but still like you don't walk away from these kind of dollars.
If they fail that grant thing there, that would be uh. Why you're here is to consult and you missed that one, so whoops.
Uh, well, same thing with the lobbyists, cause the lobbyists in the meeting said, yeah, I met with, uh, I had a conversation with the Transportation Secretary about. Two other projects. No, the question was, why weren't you having a conversation about our project?
Right.
So anyways, okay, what's 175 million between?
I don't have that much. I didn't have very many meetings last week at all. I did do the Board of Equalization sat in here for most of that. That was very entertaining. Um, interesting for not sitting through one of those before. Um, had some conversations with Mr. Gilmore. About hosties up in the Puget Sound area, which it sounds like he's already talked to Dave.
Uh, he wants to do dinner tomorrow.
So I never pick up dinners.
Well, I told him I can't meet any other time and I can't meet at dinner, so I gotta tell him that too.
Um, and then I have a Don Tibbetts meeting tomorrow.
Yours is at three?
Yes.
Yeah.
So um.
No, I'm gonna pull that one off.
They're researching, Steve is researching the container. Um, issue that guy's on vacation. Um, on whether we have enough, how many do we have on standby? How long of a wait is it if somebody wants a, say a 40 yard container? Cause this seems like an ongoing issue and I wanna get a better drill down on whether there's enough containers being supplied. Uh, in our county. Um, we'll also be going through the landfill contract to see if there's something in there that stipulates what they're supposed to be doing on that front. Um, but then I'm also gonna be talking to um, Mr. Tibbetts tomorrow. Uh, in hopes that they will, for like a Golden Dale cleanup event, which we're not even sure is gonna happen this year for lack of all dears. Um, if they might waive the transfer station fees for a weekend, you can do a cleanup weekend or something. Uh, they used to hand out little slips for free trash or whatnot, so I'll be kind of, I don't know, feeling him out on that. Yesterday, Golden Dale City Hall Subcommittee on Parks and Community Development. Um, Parks and Rec was there, Hospital was there, Chamber was there. Mainly talking about all of the, the Reds projects that are still moving ahead. Uh, and then try to develop a, a comprehensive parks plan for the area. That's about the excitement of my week.
Mr. Van Cleve, do you have something or are you just eavesdropping? All right. I had the canvassing board meeting on Friday, which was highly interesting for uh, my first go election. The, on the far east end of the county, there were 15 voters, you know. Somewhere around 15 voters, um. What else was in?
Were they passing that school board lobby that failed last time?
We, it was failing on our first meeting and it was passing by the final, really close.
Last year, so I was wondering.
Yeah, it was their last chance. It barely, barely passed. Um, and then um, I attended their correctional office appreciation.
Yeah, so did I.
Yeah, oh, you did go, good. Other than that, I don't have anything else that's super important.
There's the law enforcement appreciation thing on Thursday, which they're doing a speech on the courthouse steps. I've always went. Um, I will probably go again this year for that one and then they're gonna do that candlelight vigil in the evening. I'll, I'll be back for that one.
Okay. Um, Thursday, I. I've got signature training for one o'clock, so if you go.
That's me too. So I'm trying to sneak into the signature training and do that and I might have to step out of signature training for 20 minutes. Unless Dave wants to zoom into that.
I will be in Tacoma. I already have two things. I have.
Double book.
Double, I've actually triple booked on something and I'm like, well, I can be in two places at once, but I can't be in three.
So the fire and rescue is that like, really important or?
Let me see.
This is the, the local fire and rescue, right?
Yeah, it's gorge. Yeah, I think they're just gonna go over fire.
Well, if some, if you can't go and somebody, you're the fire guy on the board, so.
Oh, on Thursday? Oh, that, that's the.
Yeah.
By state, that's the fire.
Yes.
Yes, that's common.
It's, yeah.
It's just the update.
It's just, it's been, it's been good as far as I appreciate it. It was more, that's the one that really.
Sorry, started, it was, it wasn't really, it was more recreation based. It was. During the pandemic where we had the closures in different places and all the people were coming and then if. We weren't closed and they were closed on the Oregon side, then they just all came to the other side and then.
Was wondering if this was gonna continue.
Didn't that start with the Eagle Creek Fire too?
Yeah, yeah, it did. And so before it was a fire and then it was recreation and it's fire and recreation and. Um, it wasn't gonna continue, but then the folks decided, cause we were meeting. I think at the height, it was like every two weeks. And so now it's on a six week cycle, I think. Um, just to.
Pretty good check in with.
It is, it, the thing that's, it's useful is that you get, it is mostly of all the um, agencies. Give a check in all around the whole region. And so it's like a 45 minute briefing. And then the, there's, the only electeds that really participate are the, so um. Scott Hagy, Commissioner from Wasco, myself, Bob Hamlin and Skamania. There really is not um, hood reverse kind of hit and miss if somebody shows up. And so it is, it's, it's kind of nice to know what's going on as far as both on fire and then the recreation piece of it as far as what's. What's open, these closed, what the problem, cause like, remember a couple of years ago or. Year and a half ago where one of the big problems people were having was all the dumpsters at all the um. Locations where all people were like bringing their, like they were always overflowing, just all this household trash in it. And so it was kind of a check in where people were like, is that really going on? They're like, oh, absolutely. It's terrible the um, around and they eventually. And then the law enforcement people were participating. And so they were like, oh, really? Well, maybe we will just pay a little more attention. And so the problem got solved for the most part where um, I think they did some enforcement and. And it was mostly, it seemed to be more surprisingly, it was more east side than west side. Or they just gave up on the west end, I don't know, but there was a lot of um, so that was just one example. So and then last, last month, they did the, uh, they came in and did the fire um. Where they showed the maps as far as the uh. It wasn't really about fire, it was about tree mortality and what the forest, the, cause they, they do this where they do the LIDAR where they fly over and.
Check for tree health and.
Yeah, it's really was kind of interesting as far as how.
You can anticipate fire movement.
Exactly, and that's right, in those zones and then kind of what things looked like, which it was not real good news. It's bad, it's, it's basically bad everywhere. It's terrible. It's all gonna burn out, so. Sell your house, Rob. Get out while you can. So.
Uh, one other update I can throw you, another thing that I'm kind of playing with and dabbling in. To try to get information to bring back to the board is we know we have a. Mental health problem in this county. We know we have a comprehensive issue. Um, and what alternatives do we necessarily have? And you know, we kind of brought up the hospitals, but. I don't know that the hospitals are too interested in, in crisis. Um, or jail or law enforcement type, they're kind of doing their own thing. Still want to have conversations there. Um, but.
You talk to the hospitals or?
I'm still dabbling. Uh, the thing I'm trying to look into now and will be this week is, Skamania has their own um, mental health. Department inside the health department. Right? Um, and apparently it's awesome. So um, I want to know more. Um, I want, yeah, I want to know, are they using their. State money, Beacon Health Comprehensive Health, are they funneling that into their own deal to have their own two employees? Working in the health department that are crisis mental health responders? Are they getting said funding somewhere else? Um, so.
Their own two D, DCR?
I don't even know that it's two, it could be more than that. But uh, right? If somebody's doing it, we don't necessarily have to reinvent the wheel. We just have to see what they're doing and see whether that fits in our community and our budget.
You talk to the.
I haven't talked to anybody yet. Um, I've just kind of started on this task over the weekend. And I'm prematurely telling you. Um, just so you know where I'm going over the next week. I don't know that I will get all the information I need by the time we have a workshop next week. And are we gonna do that, move that to Wednesday?
If we needed.
Okay.
As far as, so are we gonna do that on Wednesday?
Information by that workshop, but I might at least have a.
I mean, I'll leave it up to, as far as like, I can't, I'll be on a plane on Thursday and if you guys want to have that on Thursday, that's, that's good. That's why there's three of us. I'm leaving on the 19th, on the Thursday, and so we talked about doing it on Wednesday.
Are you gonna move the entire workshop to Wednesday or have just so?
Yeah, I thought, or either way, I think there's a question mark.
It's a question mark. I, I can do either.
Like, I'm, I'm fine either way.
Call it on the radio in the morning. I don't, I don't find either way.
We do have comprehensive health services coming in on 24th.
Okay.
Invited all the different, uh, departments that deal with health issues as well as reaching out to the hospitals.
Okay.
Are you gonna be around for KLCK in the morning?
No.
Your, your early flight.
I think so. Uh, I shall check. If I'm not, if I can, I will, just because, you know, I don't want to. If I'm available, I will call it.
Are you moving the 19th workshop to the 18th? Is that a yes?
Um, it says you've got Dave, oh, that's a 5pm Clay Sac. Um, I have no problem with moving it from Thursday to Wednesday.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we just need to make sure, all right.
So, no, yeah, I was thinking that mental health stuff is gonna be on that workshop, but it's the following Tuesday meeting.
Yep, and I'll be back. It's like, I'm just going for the weekend, so.
And, and we might not.
Yay.
My hope is.
It's a graduation.
Her check with her counterparts down there in Skamania. And, you know, see if that's something that she might be interested in and dabble and play with.
Do we want to invite um, Chief Hepner? Cause I mean, we've all seen that newspaper article about what they're doing with mental health and the ride alongs and everything.
Oh.
To that as well?
Yeah.
I mean, I know he.
To be anybody that's having the interaction. As we know, law enforcement is.
Yeah.
Basically, they're our first responders in.
Right.
Crisis mental health.
Well, that's kind of the kicker is white salmon has got ride alongs. Um, where are they getting them from?
From Skyline. Yeah.
Which is the conversation that we need to have that over here or we need to have our. Um, our own county, so what, what we have now is broken and doesn't work and we keep trying to. Duct tape the leaky water pail. And I don't know, I just think we need to look at all the options that are potentially out there and then just make an informed decision about that.
My scary thought is, is if we try to hire our own, if nobody else can hire any DCR.
Right.
What would make us think we can, considering all the positions we can hire for?
Right.
I've talked to a few of the. Mental health people, uh, the counselors even back during my campaign season. And. There's. Um, definitely some conflict between them and their employer comprehensive. So that might be one of the reasons why they can't get anybody is. It may be an employment issue.
Hmm.
Um, it's not so much the counselor, it's the boss and this would make it a different boss.
And everybody loves working for us.
Right? So, it's.
I mean, look at how many people are saying it.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can move mental health into the HR department and.
It is a related field, so.
He's got extra cubicles.
With that, uh, would anybody like to make a motion to adjourn before something goes?
Yes, so moved, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second.
There's been a motion and a second to recess until 1 o'clock. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. See you all soon. God damn it. Your mic. My phone is off again. Okay, there we go. All right. Just so everybody knows. We approve the business agenda and we are tabling the commissioner meeting minutes. Next up, we're going to move into citizen comment. Comments will be limited to three minutes per individual. And make sure that any citizen comment is that something is not on the agenda for later. You will have, you can comment on something completely different, but please do not comment on either of the public hearings. With that being said, as always, I will open it up to those in the room first for public comment. Is there anybody who'd like to provide public comment? Okay, hearing none, I will open it up online and we have Vern Harpool, I'm guessing. Vern, how are you today?
Hi, thank you for hearing me today. I am here on a completely different matter. I'm here representing Seek Community Richardson for Click Attack County. I think you guys are aware, but just for background, we are a group of folks Who help With the five oh one C three management of all the nonprofits, small nonprofits in both Click Attent and Skamania County. Many years ago, the Board of Commissioners helped us get started with some funding to get the five oh one C three status. And I'm here just to kind of report, we've had a few meetings. First of all, it's just to Keep praises on your senior services, folks. You have a new senior services coordinator or Helper, Isaiah Garcia, who has been doing an outstanding job of reporting to us and Getting us involved in all sorts of different ideas. We have a big pot of money of senior services money from the state that we're Do it five oh one C three that we're helping him distribute Care to the seniors citizens. The second comment is that When Richard Foster is around, we get great feedback about what's economic development's going on in Click Attack County. We're very intimately involved with that. But as you know, he's pretty much never around playing Marine all the time. I'm a retired military person. I respect it, but The lack of continuity when he is not around and he has literally not been around for most of the last three years Is noticeable to us. In that respect, we work with Click with Skamania County as well. And Skamania County has got all kinds of really amazing Economic development things going on. That seem to, Click Attack County seems to be completely behind the ball. Me, Skamania County's got a A person who goes to the legislature and advocates for their guard, their grants. Their economic development folks put together small business meetings throughout their county. All kinds of really wonderful things going on in Skamania that we just don't see going on in Click Attack. It's just an observation for you to do what you will. And I'm not sure. The last, the question would be if you have time, to whom should seek? Report to, is it the case of PETA folks? Who's running the economic development program in Click Attack County when Richard's never there? Anyway, that's our observations. Thanks for putting up with me. I yield.
Thank you for yielding your last five seconds. You're getting really good at right at three minutes.
Okay.
All right. Next up, back in the room, if anybody would like to provide public comment on something that is not on the agenda for later. Come forward, sir. Can you give us your name? Make sure you, can you come up and talk into the mic so people online can hear you?
The rumor I've heard is our V S O, Bill Smith is gonna be retiring. And I wondered what the board had in mind for replacing. If you got anybody you're training. Or I haven't heard anything. That's what, that's what I want to know. He's done a lot of good for the veterans. You can talk to Dave about that. He knows.
Can we, can we have your name Keith for the record?
Does anybody quickly want to respond to Keith? Yeah.
Go ahead. If you're keyed in on it, essentially, yes, they, I don't know that even have a post here, do they? The plan is to post it To reach out to the legions to see if they have ideas that they can then Encourage those people to apply, that hopefully we can get somebody in here before Bill leaves to get them really cross trained before they leave.
Yeah, they need to be trained.
Yeah, the board author, we actually asked for, we want, you know, we're hoping we have at least a couple of months of overlap between The new person and and Bill as he retires.
Yeah, I don't think Bill is replaceable, but if we can get somebody anywhere close to him, I would be happy.
Yeah, it'll take a while to get him trained.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Keith.
Okay, next up, we will go back online. Gabrielle Gilbert.
Hi, thank you. I wanted to discuss the last couple of meetings, last one and this one where You address comprehensive health and what I feel is a little disrespectful. The commentary of, you know, cashing checks is snarky commentary. The, this is pervasive Commentary that is so negative towards comprehensive health is a little unsettling. I think that if you're gonna focus on proactively building support systems, Comprehensive health should at least feel that when they are addressing the county and the county is addressing them, it's in a respectful manner. Because creating a strong armed hostile relationship seems very counterproductive. And then comprehensive health would have every reason to put boundaries up. Because who would want to continue in a negative narrative? You have programs that exist. Oregon has a program that came out thirty years ago called the Kahoots. The sheriff's department is aware of that program as well, in which they have been able to put Crisis managers, mental health crisis managers on scene. And Kahoots has thirty years to show that budgets are Literally, they save money in county dollars and city dollars when such a program is implemented. And you could have some sort of Program that you craft that is uniquely for Click Attack County. But I think that the, you know, You talk about being respectful in comments and in discussion, and you're not showing that in your commentary in the last few sessions with Concerning comprehensive health. So I think you have to be aware of that. And then finally daycare. Again, I come to you to say you need to have it in your economic plan. It is ludicrous to have a ten year plan without it. It is fundamental to economic growth. You can't entice the individuals that you're hoping to fill county seats. And and county organizations, if you don't even provide that simple basic. You can't build five million dollar buildings to house your own county business and not have included some sort of daycare space as well. And I feel that you need to start being clear about that. I know grant dollars came in. But those grant dollars that we received concerning daycare were more for discussions of implementation. And you saw with the grant dollars that were received by other places. Million dollar grants were given by already existing daycares for improvements. And so for us to be eligible for those dollars, we would put skin in the game and actually break ground and build something. So that families and individuals working in the county can be served. Thank you for your time and I hope that you guys will answer to my commentary at the end. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gilbert. And and thank you also for reminding me the Board of County Commissioners will respond at one twenty five. This is your time to comment. And we will go back in the room. Is there anybody else who would like to provide public comment? Not seeing, oh, please come forward.
Good afternoon. Laurie Zoller from Click Attack. I've written a pretty lengthy thing, trying to figure out how to say this, with all due respect. My concern is the lack of public participation. I don't know what has happened. Maybe it's coming out of COVID. But there seems to be a very big design that now does not include Monthly meetings with different boards like Planning Commission and the other boards that are useful to you. Those are your public participants. Hearing from them helps you move your projects forward in a manner that you know you have public participation and hear from the diverse groups. It can help you find the different missing links in those Projects that are coming forward. There's also some design in lack of public participation coming up for public meetings. And there are three real triggers for people in life. Their children, their land and their money. And if we exempt the public from painful public meetings that are hard to handle, hard to hear, We're exempting those people from growing, from learning, from moving into those projects in a helpful way. And case in point was gorge commission, Wild and Secret Rivers. Click Attack Trail. Those all had very, very heated, pointed and ugly, ugly meetings that we all know about. And what I can say is those staff did use a term called meaningful public involvement. And they ground those out, hours worth of them in very ugly situations a lot of times. But you saw the people move through those meetings that way. And you saw them learn and you saw them get on board and you saw them be able to vent. Without that, you get heated things that come up in any form that they can find to hand out. So I'd hate to think that this board would continue on the idea that public meetings aren't necessary. Because I don't want to see the board's legacy be you were worse than the gorge commission because you didn't even offer public meetings. To that end, too, not catching up. One of my really big worries is a focus of not catching up on your plan. I know it's coming. I know we've talked about it, but In my mind, that needs to be your priority before you take on any new projects. Where that left your staff was Yes, there was some things that happened with Yourselves that were unhappy. But it also happened with your staff, with the departments, because they're trying to process those Applications from seventeen year old documents. They don't have up to date ordinance. They don't have up to date regulation. They have to process with what they've got in their toolbox. So that left them in the same fray you were Taking heat. Because we didn't engage first in meaningful planning before we moved into new projects. So I'd like to see you really maybe take a step back and look at cleaning up house and getting us into the future with new planning. And then start taking on new projects. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Zoller. Okay, next up, we will go online. Is there anybody who'd like to provide public comment? I am not seeing anyone. Oh, four nine zero one.
Good afternoon, commissioners. This is Sherry. I wanted to first thank whoever made the planning commission meeting available on a Zoom Availability last night. That was very nice to have access to that transparency Of the planning commission meeting. And with that said, I also appreciated the committee members immensely for their questions. For their concern as committee members and community or residents at Click Attack County. I felt they had very good questions, concerns regarding the critical areas ordinance. And I was in agreeance with the planning commission getting additional education on what these changes will Be, what they'll look like, the rechargeable aquifers. So again, I appreciate the transparency to make that planning commission meeting available to the public. And I I am hoping as the county moves forward and its growth ideas, its development ideas, That you access these committees that you have established through your own Board of County Commissioners. These are people in your community that you trust and you value their opinions. And I am requesting that the county continue to access these members of our community that will look Look out for the community and the development of the future of Click Attack County. And I thank the people who do volunteer for these boards and the time that they give. So I would hope that the county will continue to access these boards as I watched these members of society Of our community last night be very concerned. And I also have concerns with pushing forward on this critical ordinance. Approval until the committees are educated more fully so they can make best decisions for our county. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bosque. Okay, back in the room. Did I see someone else's hand up? Mr. Wagner, please come forward.
Greg Wagner was seized. You commissioners are using the planning commission to review the critical area ordinance. And I don't understand why it isn't being used to review the title twenty. And why wasn't it used to review the solar moratorium? Why isn't the planning, why wasn't the planning commission involved with that? You use the planning commission back when you had the marijuana moratorium. And they decided there was a safety, health and welfare issue with marijuana to the citizens. But yet the solar moratorium didn't go before them and you determined there wasn't any danger to the citizens from lithium ion batteries in the solar. So that concerns me, you know, you were able to ban solar, you were able to ban marijuana. But that was from the planning commission's recommendation. But you didn't use the planning commission for the solar. And Mr. Solder said, if we wanted to ban solar, that would be easy. But yet we haven't even considered ordinances for it. We won't, you, you know, you say we can ban it, but you won't even talk about ordinances. We need ordinances for the solar. So I don't understand why the board of, by the planning commission and the board of adjustments aren't used more often To review these issues and make recommendations to the board. That's their purpose. There are citizens that volunteer and want to be part of the decision making. For our county, it shouldn't just fall into the Board of County Commissioners laps and you guys get to make the decision as you did on solar. That I don't think that was done properly. And, you know, in the county comprehensive plan, pages like sixty seven through sixty nine, it says you are to encourage Citizen participation and ask for their opinions, hold meetings, and you refuse to do that with the citizens. You know, we should have had meetings held before we do a public hearing and we have testimony on Title twenty or the critical area ordinances, whatever comes up. There ought to be meetings to inform the citizens What they need to know about There ought to be meetings to inform the citizens what they need to know about before they can testify. So I'd like to see more of the citizens being involved and not just fall in the laps of the County Commissioners, and you guys make the final decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Okay, back online. Is there any, anyone who'd like to provide public comment? Raise your hand, star six to unmute yourself, turn your camera on. Tracy.
Hello, Commissioners. I'm Tracy McCune from Lila, Washington. And I would just like to put some feelers out there for anybody that may want to be involved in this afternoon's meeting without saying anything about it. But if they were to go to the RCW 42.56.900 and look at the revised deposition in that RCW, specifically in sections 262, 63, 64, and 65, if they are interested in being in the meeting this afternoon, that might give them some insight. Another place they may go, if they're interested, is the the CEMP, which you folks, I'm sure, are aware of, Clickatat County Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan from November of 2008, which lists authorities for developing that plan, which the Commissioners were a part of. And lastly, to go to the Clickatat County Washington Community Wildfire Protection Plan, which is known as Clickatat County Wildfire Protection Plan of 2018, that you, the Commissioners were not a part of, as far as I know, except for in a single one-on-one advisory group leadership participations settings with community leaders. If you notice on that page, on page seven of that Clickatat County Emergency Management Plan is my name, seventh down from the top, under Gracie McCune. It should be Tracy. But it lists me as an advisory group that participated in the development of hazard profiles, risk assessments, and mitigation measures. The advisory group meetings were the primary venue for authenticating the planning record. So I just have to agree with Mrs. Zoller, I believe it was, earlier, when she said that Clickatat County is not providing public comment, or, well, except for in the Commissioners' meetings, but they're not, they're not involving the, the community in decisions. And, and I can contest to this because on chapter seven, or page seven of the Clickatat County Washington Community Wildfire Protection Plan of 2018, I am listed as a stakeholder or advisory group member in this plan and was never told about it, nor, so they didn't get my authorization to even use my name. But I was a volunteer firefighter and somehow got on that plan. So looking forward to the meeting this afternoon, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. McCune. It is 1:24. We've heard a lot. Does either of you plan on responding to anything, or would you like to hear any more public comment? All right, we'll go back out. You good with that? Back out in the room one more time. Is there anybody who would like to provide public comment on anything that is not on the agenda later? Okay, I don't see anything online. Would either of my seatmates like to respond to anything that they have heard? Mistress, no?
I'll, I'll take a crack at a couple of these. First, to Ms. Gilbert, I appreciate your comments about companies of mental health and the need to make sure that our language is respectful when we're talking. We do have, we actually have them scheduled because I don't like to have conversations about organization or people or anybody when we haven't given them the opportunity to be present. And so they are going to come in on the 24th, and we're going to, we're going to have a conversation with them just kind of detailing what the problem is, or at least the perception. And we're, we're not creating this that there's an issue out there. I mean, this is what people are telling us. And so we are just communicating that to them that there seems to be a problem with getting mental health services in a timely manner in Clickatat County. And so we've invited them to come in, and let's sit down and see what we can figure out with them. I can't really, Ms. Zoller, I'd love to get into a detailed, as far as what, and flesh that out, what you're meaning about. I would say in general, yes, I, I think we do need, we need to use our boards and commissions that are, again, recommenders to the Board of Commissioners. And to that point, Mr. Wagner, ultimately, the decisions that get made actually do rest with the Board of Commissioners. That doesn't mean they should be made in, without getting input from folks. But ultimately, that is what the Board gets elected to do, is to be the decision-makers, and they own it, good and bad. They do. And ultimately, you know, we are, we are held accountable by the people that put us into these offices. And so if we are out of step with what the majority of people want, that, that gets, there is a solution to that. So again, back to the earlier thing, though, but I do think we, we need to use folks for those recommendations just so that there's an understanding that ultimately the buck stops with the Board of Commissioners, that, that's the job. I'm going to stop there. I will defer to my seatmates.
Sherry, I'm glad as well that the meeting was held via Zoom. We had, you know, board members that can zoom in from home after work. That seems like it worked well last night, and I believe that it was recorded, and I would like to review that recording as well at some point. That's one of the easiest ways for us, the record is going to be created and shown. With regards to Mr. Wagner, I will definitely ensure that I asked the Planning Director why the Title 20 was not brought first in front of the Planning Commission with regards to the ion, lithium-ion solar commissioners. Or they testify. With, with regards to the ability to institute a moratorium, that can come from the top down, which Commissioner Christopher was the instigator in submitting the moratorium for the solar projects. That can also come from the top down in asking the Planning Commission their opinion on instituting a moratorium. It can also, I believe, come from the bottom up, from the Planning Commission themselves, saying, we need to talk about this. I believe that, and I wasn't here, but the marijuana moratorium, that went from the Commissioners asking for advice from the Planning Commission. Was that how it happened? And so that came from the top down, asking for advice, and then it came forward. And, and that, those fights were held there. There's multiple ways that in, in government, that you can go from the top down or the bottom up, and we've seen two examples of that right here. Tracy, I don't exactly know with regards to the hearing today, which one you were talking about. I do know that many of those comp plans, wildfire protection plans, I was, I was a member of those. I've been a member of those both as my role previously as a county employee, but also as a community member and community council member. And I agree with everyone when it says, and I'm the first one to say, that communities and your volunteering is what creates community. Once you pay people to do a job, usually the amount of community volunteerism drops off. And then I have always appreciated and have spent my life volunteering for my community in many, a myriad of ways. And so I respect and I appreciate everything that the communities do. With regards to daycare, that, that was brought up. Our SBDC, Small Business Development Consultant, has put on a daycare forum. I believe there is one person who is interested in starting a daycare in Goldendale. And I also believe that there is a large sum of legislative dollars to begin a daycare. So we are making progress. And finally, with regards to Vern, I thank you for, I, I always appreciate hearing what people are hearing from both us as well as our employees. Vern, you should know, I used to attend the SEEK meetings. And with regards to the SEEK, I would love to have SEEK come and give us an update because the last time was before COVID that I'm aware of. I would love to hear what great things you are working with as the financial fiduciary responsible party for all of these local nonprofits that do not have their 501(c)(3) status. SEEK is, is one organization that I have always been 100% in support of. So thank you, Vern, and I saw your thumbs up, so I know you're still listening. With that, oh, go ahead, 30 seconds. We're already.
That was a long speech on your part. Yeah, the only one I'd add to that is Vern was Seek. You may or may not be aware already that I'm trying to put together a Goldendale Community Development Foundation out here, of which our plan is to utilize the services of SEEK. So I'm sure you'll be busy here in the near future, and we'll have conversations about it. But thank you for doing that. Everybody else, I think you guys handled. So that's all I have to.
All right. Thank you very much. With that, we are going to close public comment. And we are going to open public hearings, public bid openings, and we will begin with the public hearing to consider a supplemental budget 2022-1 and amendments for the 2022 budget for various funds in the sum of $1,608,186, and to hear public comments in favor or opposed. And we will, let's go back. Let me pull up my public hearing. So I am declaring the public hearing open. And we will have, a staff will present and provide a brief overview. Good afternoon, ma'am.
Afternoon. Okay, so there are four departments requesting supplemental budget adjustments. Three of the requests are budget neutral, meaning that departments are bringing their own funds. Emergency management would like to use fund, fund balance for a non-capital project and dispatch. PUD got us their budget for Dalsport wastewater a little late, so we have to make some adjustments there. Um, the county, so, Indiana Defense has some increase in expert fees, so we need to make some adjustments there. There are four requests that need budget intervention, meaning that the request needs, needs some help. We need to support that. And that would be Public Works is requesting some projects from 2021 be carried over into 2022. One of those would be the road fund. If you remember, there was $500,000 from the landfill that, that we did not provide to them for the Courtney Road project in the 2022 budget. They were going to try and finish that project minus that, those funds. They were not able to do that. So they were requesting that they get that $500,000. There's our small, they're small projects and non-capital. That's the basic overview.
Quickie question on the Public Works one. The, the Snowden Road, 150 grand, is that all grant funds coming into the county as a plus, or is that money leaving the reserves as a minus?
Snowden Road.
Well, they have $650,000 in the road fund, $500,000 of it is the landfill. And then there was additional grant, I thought, for Snowden. Grant.
Grant fund.
It's all 150 of incoming revenues. Well, incoming and then outgoing as it goes to your department, going into one fund, into the next fund, or just in one? Paid out to the, got it. Right. Nothing further.
Okay, let me go back to that. Kind of got a little bit out of line there. But I, it's a good question. I'm not saying it's not a good question. That's all right. I'm going to open this public hearing for the purpose of receiving public testimony, both in favor of and opposed to the 2022, 2022 budget amendments. Madam Snell, did we have anyone sign in? Okay, with that, I will open it for public testimony. First, I will go in the room. If anybody has any public testimony on the changes to the adopted budget, if so, please come up and sit down and give us your name and where you're from and any comments you may have. Is there anybody in the? Please come forward, ma'am, Ms. Bosque. And as always, it's three minutes.
Oh, okay. And any questions allowed?
This is public testimony. You're supposed to, there's, they should be comments. If you ask questions, the Board may or may not ask that of staff when it's our turn.
Ideally, questions in the future, ideally, questions should come yesterday.
Okay.
So that we hear your opinion of the answers today.
For public, what is this comment? This is not a public hearing. It's public comment.
It's public comment for the public hearing.
Okay, okay. So, um, this is, from my understanding, this is a supplemental request, and I feel like it's a lot of money. My first question when looking at it was how much more money was Courtney Road going to require? That's the, I believe, what Commissioner Christopher is referring to Snowden. Um, you know, there's a lot of trust or a lot of, you know, there's grants, there's this. But my question is, how much money are the people going to have to pay more for the finishing of Courtney Road? I think I was told at one point it was up to $6.4 million, and living in that area, I wondered what, what is up that road? Why is our county fixing that road? I've been up that road. I don't understand why we're spending millions of dollars to fix Courtney Road. So with that being said, I guess I'm left with a lot of questions. And I would say that that's a lot of money to put on one road, that I don't know what you plan on doing with that road, unless you want to answer me what the future plans are for that road and development or so forth up there. And that I don't think the citizens should have, the taxpayers should continue to pay for road updates that don't, that don't serve us, that may serve other purposes, but the people who live in the county and pay for these road updates. So that being said, I would say that you shouldn't approve that until we figure out more why, why these, why this is happening, this Courtney Road and the continued expense, for, for what reason. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bosque. All right. Next, we will go online. Is there anyone online who has any public testimony with regards to the budget supplemental? If so, raise your hand, star six, turn your camera on. And I can get, I got glare, so it's hard for me to see from this angle. I am not seeing anyone. Oh, Tracy.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
All of a sudden, my phone stopped working. So I am against the proposal for the budget changes. For one, I agree with Ms. Bosque and the Courtney Road project. I haven't heard, even though I used to be on the fire department, and thank you for the positive comments there, Commissioner. But when I was on, I've never heard anything about the fire department up there in Courtney Road or how it's associated with this. But I do question whether there is some sort of development or something there that has to do with the fire department. I questioned the, since I was not involved, but was a community member that was listed on page seven of that Clickatat County Fire Wildfire Mitigation Plan. I questioned the risk assessments and the hazards and the shoreline thing and the ecology thing and all the community things that have been put together. thing and the ecology thing and all the community things that have been put together since 2018, because they were not with public public hearings and public involvement, as far as I know, and I was in the fire department during that time. And my husband is chief of the fire department, so you sure would have thought I would have been involved in the risk assessments. I don't agree that that Goldendale is number seven on all Washington cities in fire wildfire risk. So I think that the commissioners need to go back and look at the Community Wildfire Protection Plan of 2018 and really assess the information there. Is that accurate? Do we really need to have an ecology department that will make sure that click that, the little click, click it out and the click it out, you know, that they won't have development around it? There's not much area to develop there, as you well know, with Swell Canyon and stuff. And then lastly, the, the maps that were designed for that, and I know I might be going kind of outside of the the budget, but I believe that it is part of it. The maps that were designed that were in the consent agenda and approved today were already, were already paid for by FEMA. So John Grimm of Lyle has done all of the mapping for the risk assessments. And that can be reached if you look at A R E G I S dot com and search for Lyle. And you will see that the flood planes have already been mapped. The risk assessments have already been done. Some are in the process, some have been completed. But I don't know why the county needs to again pay for something that's already been completed through the federal government. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. McKeon. Okay, we will go back into the audience. Is there anybody else who would like to provide public testimony on the supplemental budget? Okay, I will go back online. Is there anyone who would like to provide public comment or testimony on the supplemental budget that we have before us today? Star six, raise your hand, unmute your phone, turn your video on. Gabrielle Gilbert.
Hi, thank you. So Courtney Road residents pay taxes and they pay property taxes, and they have every right to see those dollars returned back to them. And if that's completing a project of their road, I don't think that those are dollars that are misspent. The fact that the county has discussed not having funds to do things such as daycares, that there was a budget deficit of almost a million and a half dollars that they didn't have the money to account for. And then to have this come up where now you're ready to spend dollars. Well, if you now have those dollars, then the residents of Courtney Road are as worthy of receiving that as anyone else in the county. And I don't think that this kind of divide and conquer on who deserves and who doesn't is productive. So that's what I would like to say concerning Courtney Road. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. One last time in the room, would anybody like to provide public testimony on the supplemental budget? Okay, and one last time online, if there's anybody who would like to provide public comment on the supplemental budget? I am not seeing anyone. Okay, we are now going to close the public comment on the supplemental budget, and we are going to move into the board can ask and request clarification of public statements, questions of staff, questions of the commenters, seatmates. Is there anything either of you would like to request for clarification?
Yes, sir. If I may, Mr. Chairman. A couple, and I'm asking the questions to, for the clarification, I, I believe I know the answers, but I think based on testimony that I've heard today, there is a there's a misunderstanding as far as how the process works, how things get funded, how things don't. First off, let's start with a million and a half dollars is a lot of money.
Yes.
But please refresh us all. One of the problems, I will say, that can cloud particularly supplemental budgets is that when we are contemplating funding something by transferring something out of reserve into the, say, the road fund, for example, we basically, it's getting double billed, meaning that $500,000 that we have said we're going to transfer for the Courtney Road project shows up as a $500,000 coming out of reserve and $500,000 going in to the road fund.
Yes.
So that really, when we say a million dollars, it's really an expenditure of $500,000. Is that accurate?
That is accurate.
So that's the first thing. So the first on Courtney Road is it really, it is $500,000. It is not, and I'm looking to the deputy director. This project, Courtney Road, this has gone through the six-year road program going back actually more than six years through a whole planning process. As far as the public commented, it was placed on there, it was prioritized, it worked its way up through the, the project list. Multiple state dollar grants that went through that. The $500,000, I guess, deficit, we'll call it, was indicated when the project, when the budget was adopted in the, at the end of December. This was not a cost overrun. It was hopeful that the, that's all the dollars that we were hoping we could get the project done for. The project went out to bid, the bids came in, and the project actually cost what we thought it was going to cost, which was about $500,000 more than the money that we had put towards that project, hence the request. The project, people should know, is under, we opened bids, we let the contract, it's under construction. So this is not a, the, the, the time for debating about whether it should be built or not built was, is not this year. It might, the last time it would have been was last year. The most appropriate time was four or five years ago because of the planning process that we go through. These are not decisions that get made lightly. And they're, the public is in that. So the other ones in the, as you indicated, the other supplemental, the, they're basically, everybody's bringing their own money.
Correct.
Other than, I did have a question, though, on Superior Court, not to pick them, on them, it's not. I was a little, like, if you can explain to me, because there's the, I got the we it appears to me that we inadvertently didn't include, so this is kind of a cleanup, but there was additional, is there, for the interpreters? Is that because we spent the money for the interpreters out of a different lineup, you know, out of the, the dollars and that, or is it that that cost is actually more than we had planned on for, or not, I'm not, I'm saying interpreters, expert witnesses, different experts that the court uses? Can you come forward so that folks online can hear the response? And I apologize for folks that the director, the deputy director was nodding his head, if you can see that. Go ahead.
So the additional funds in the OPD account are, it's the grant that we get for, from Office of Public Defense. That's where we take all of our expert money from. That's how we pay.
So those are the grant, so that's, okay.
Yeah. And then the other, the professional service and the miscellaneous jury, those were just inadvertently left off.
Okay.
Busy time.
So there really is two different ones, is new grant dollars coming in for this, this other stuff was the, we just left it off.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we're cleaning that up.
Cleaning it up. Okay, thank you.
So, so if I may, the 25,000, 001 general fund, Superior Court, the correction of the error of omission, that is funds that you have available that we just forgot to include.
Right.
Okay, but you have funds available for that, so it's zero. The indigent defense, 25,000, that is funds that were above and beyond what we expected or what we are expecting for expert witnesses and such. And, and you are bringing funds for that? You already have the budget to do it. So all you're doing is shuffling the cards on the deck.
Right, we're just putting more in from our pot that we already have.
Okay, so I just wanted to be very crystal clear.
And I would crystal clear this once more, because if I remember correctly, when we brought all of the electeds and department directors before us on that budget and we're penny pinching them beyond belief, we were told at the time, the number that you gave us to do that budget wasn't going to be enough. And we're, we discussed, yes, okay, let's make it the right number. We just forgot to do it.
Correct.
So we knew this back in November that this was going to hit us because we forgot to add that back into the budget.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to.
Well, we were hoping. Yes.
Okay, my question is the Dallasport wastewater line item changed to adjust for the PUD budget. What was it originally? I'm seeing 116, 186. What did we have in there?
I would have to go a little better, original budget.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I don't know that we saw, was it even in our budget pack?
No, I don't. Did we put a number in there? Because we didn't actually even have a number.
I believe that we put.
We used like last year's number or something. Did we?
Okay, so all we're doing is cleaning that up.
Yes.
All right. And then the other one that I am just, you know, saying, the communications general fund, so it's $25,000 from last year that were, you know, carried over, that were not budgeted, and now we're doing it. So, so it's not $50,000 total. So what I'm seeing here is really, it's not 1.6, it's 800,000. Where most of that, or not most of it, the majority of the number of things are budget neutral. The only major one that we're making changes to was last year, the $500,000, because each year we get so much money. It used to be a million, now it's 500,000. Last year, we did 500,000 into the piggy bank for Courtney Road. We pushed that off to this year, but we're going to get another 500,000 this year. So we're using that in order to backfill that from cumulative reserve is how it will actually play out in the long run. So what we're doing is, is we just slowed the roll on what's going to occur there, knowing that last year, I mean, we're, I was hopeful that, you know, the, the project would have came in under, and then the price of fuel and everything went through the roof, and I'm really glad we got it for what we did. And I would just, for those people that were speaking about the Courtney Road project, when you get to a certain stage, especially when you're already in construction, you're going to pay whatever it takes to get the job done. Because even now, having worked on these large construction projects myself, there are change orders that come in at the end, and those change orders can be sometimes minimal, sometimes massive. Usually, we set aside 5 or 10% for those changers. But these projects are large capital projects that go through years and years of design, easement right away, planning, permitting, all of this in order, I mean, this is within the gorge national scenic area. This project has been vetted and reviewed and vetted over and over again. And I will say that we got a significant amount of funds that were grant funds for this project. And the reason that we got those grant funds was because this will be the other way out of Snowden with regards to wildfire. This is one of the directions it's always been set for wildfire, but it was a one-lane dirt, darn near goat track. And if you've ever talked to anyone who lives up that road or drives that road, they can tell you how many accidents have almost occurred between them and the UPS truck on that road. And so that is, that was the reason and rationale that we got so much grant, grant funds to do this construction project. And we are, of course, now going to pay whatever it takes to get this job done. And let's all hope that it comes in under budget. Wouldn't that be nice?
Yeah.
All right.
For the record, it is, we do have a bid as far as the cost is set, but other than change orders.
Other than the change.
Something, that would be something we asked for.
Okay.
Do I get a chance?
Yes, of course.
So for clarification on Courtney, this county has always given $1 million in landfill funds to Public Works for the roads. We are the only county that does it. Last year's budget cycle, this board reduced that number to 50,000.
500.
Or 500,000, sorry. Half of that. Again, it's the only county that gets a extra fund for their road fund. Most of them get a road fund diversion or money taken away from the road fund to go into law enforcement. So the plan was originally to cut that landfill fund to 800,000 and eventually got it to 500,000, but now essentially they're wanting the 500,000 back to finish the rest of Courtney Road bid. No idea what the landfill fund part of the budget will be next year. With that, since we are in discussion, I have been a no on diverting the second part of the landfill funds for this project. I'm not changing my mind. I am a yes on all of these budget items except for the Courtney Road.
Okay. Any other for, further public questions? I guess my question would be of the clerk. Can we pull that line item out for Commissioner Christopher to vote on everything but, or is it a yes, no vote? Like, if you're in the Senate?
I just do it as a yes, no. And that's why I said I was, that's why I put it on the record that I'm in favor of all of it. I will be voting no on this, but I am in favor of all of it except for.
Okay. I will open, reopen the meeting for further public comment for those who have not commented, if they would like to. And if so, I will open that up first in the room for three minutes. If there's anyone who would like to provide further public comment. If so, raise your hand. Okay, last chance. All right, moving on to the Zoom. If there's anybody who would like to provide public comment on the supplemental, public testimony on the supplemental budget, star six, raise your hand. Turn your camera on. I am not seeing anyone. Okay, I will close this public hearing to further public testimony. Is there any more discussion amongst the board?
Maybe just a an observation, or maybe perhaps a question. Wow, and I, and I respect Commissioner Christopher, you have, you have been consistent in your concern for the, that Courtney Road project, you know, from the, the beginning as far as when you came into office. And so I'm, I'm, I'm fine with your, your point of view. There would be a logistical question or a legal question of the, you know, we bid the project, we opened bids, we've left the project, and we have to pay the bill. And so I, I mean, it is, I can't change the, I can't change my mind when the, the project is, you know, three quarters of the way, and I've already signed that I'm going to pay for it. It's like, sometimes we, we have to do that. And, and I guess it, I don't know what would happen if we didn't pass the supplemental budget with this appropriation, because I suspect we would be getting a call from the council for, because it's like, well, you said you're going to pay this bill, and now there's no money to do it. So I, I think that decision was made. And we will, we will move on. If we weren't going to do it, then we should not have let the contract. We, when we did that, we made the decision that we were going to have to pay for it.
I would just remind my seatmate that it's been, this issue has been a two-to-one vote every single time it's come up. So this is no different.
Right.
I would like to clarify one thing on these large capital projects serving on the I would like to clarify one thing on these large capital projects serving on the, um, the bridge committee, which is a five hundred million dollar project. Um, and learning a lot through that process, um, in these large projects, um, that span years, years upon years. Um, and I think we heard that the same thing from the pool committee is is that sometimes a project will get let when you only have eighty percent of the funds on hand right then and there, because you know when you're eighty percent of the way there, one way or another, you're gonna find a way to pay for that project. Whether it's revenue toll bonds or tolls or whatever it is. Um, this is, this is a project where, um, I think it was very obvious and clear that we, uh, we said that we would pay the bill when it came due, um, especially when we got, when we decided to let the project. Um, and I, I, of course, respect your decision, uh, Commissioner Christopher. Um, you have, um, have not changed, you have not flip flopped, you have not done anything, you've you have constantly and continually stated your position, and I respect that. Um, I would also like to say that, um, this is likely probably one of our last truly large construction projects of a of a public road for the next few years. And that is because that how it works for Public Works is is they have to, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, Greg. Okay, I just wanna make sure you can hear. With these projects, it takes years for the road fund to build a balance, and we get to see that every year in the budget as the road fund builds a balance in order to complete their projects on the six year road plan. This project was one example of that, where we didn't do a lot of building of small roads for multiple years, so that we could do this large project that was agreed upon many years ago by our predecessors. Um, and you, of course, just had to step into that role, and I respect everything you feel with that. Um, with that said, I'm looking at the budget looking forward that, um, knowing that the road fund is not gonna get a million dollars every year. So our match and everything else going from here on out is going to, it's gonna take longer to build that piggy bank in order for the road fund to do large projects, and that's something we're all just aware of.
And I I would also, if I can add, that if for some reason, one of you two that have been a yes on this project from the get go were not here, my vote would be a yes on the supplemental with a statement that I don't approve. Because yes, I understand the bill has to be paid, and I would pay the bill supporting the decision of the board. But.
Thank you very much.
It doesn't change my opinion of the Courtney Group project.
We completely understand. Okay, with that, I am going to clo- close this public hearing, and I would entertain a motion on the matter of a continuation or of the matter at hand.
Mister Chairman, uh, we have before us resolution, the matter of supplement will budget number one. This is for the twenty twenty two budget, amending the annual budget. Uh, increasing the budget expenditures in the sum of one million, six hundred and eight thousand, one hundred and eighty six dollars. Uh, my motion would be to approve the resolution and approve the budget amendment.
And I will step down and second the motion. Any further discussion?
No, just thank you for not throwing bricks at me.
No.
All the bricks are falling down over there.
They're over there, yeah. I got some at lunch, so.
No, no.
Although I, while we're in there, I do wanna think, uh, Jen, I think you're, this was the most uh, thorough and like the amount of information that was available in the supplemental budget process was, it's like it used to be sometimes, especially for folks on the outside, it was like things were happening in a, in a black box someplace, and it was like, nope, here's a piece of paper with some numbers on it. And I felt very well, um, briefed. I understood what we were doing other than my own confusion over over the courts. Um, uh, so I I really appreciated that.
Good. And I'd also like to say thank you, um, Jen, you do and continue to do an amazing job. And we appreciate everything that you were doing for us, as well as for the public with what you're doing on getting the information out for the public and keeping it on on the internet and on the website. It it really goes a long ways. Uh, with that, I'll call the question. All those in favor of the supplemental budget number one, uh, say aye, aye, aye. All those against?
Opposed.
Uh, let the record show the motion carries.
Okay, thank you.
And I would third the what they said. Yeah, cuz I appreciate the fact that you
Okay.
Take difficult stuff and put it down in the layman's terms so that the general public can hopefully better understand it and I better understand it that way as well, so thank you.
Oh, I think it's interesting that, yeah, you know, supplemental budget has like graphics and like, uh, it's like you're branding the.
I told her to use crayons for me.
No, very professional.
All right, let me turn this over.
Cable of content.
All right. Uh, I am going to declare the, uh, public hearing, uh, open, uh, for the continued, uh, uh, to consider the proposed amendments to the Clickitack County Environmental Ordinance Number one, two, one, zero, eight, four, under the state's Environmental Policy Act, RCW forty three, twenty one, C, uh, one, twenty, and the SEPA rules, WAC one nine seven dash eleven dash nine zero four, and to hear public comments in favor and opposed. This ordinance contains the county's SEPA procedures and policies. The SEPA rules, chapter one, nine, seven, dash, eleven, WAC, must be used in conjunction with this ordinance. We will begin with a brief overview for Mochi.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Director.
So today is the continuation of the public hearing that we held on April twenty sixth. Um, I submitted another packet to include three flow charts, uh, to facilitate the discussion. I do want to emphasize on the proposal before you is the environmental ordinance, and that's just that. It's not going to change any development regulations, such as the zoning ordinance or subdivision ordinance. Um, we, the proposal before you is to, um, consider to eliminate the administrative appeal process for non-project action for SEPA alone. Um, any kind of non-project actions such as, you know, county policies or regulations, those required to go before Planning Commission for recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners, that recommendation can be appealed to the board, and that is considered the administrative appeal. So we are not eliminating that process at all. All we are talking about is just the SEPA portion of it. Um, and SEPA is not a permit or approval. It is a review process that we generally require to do in conjunction with a development proposal or non-project action. It has to have another project attached to it. Um, and and so I'd want to make sure the public, as well as the board, understand that this is not something that we are trying to eliminate any kind of public input or anything like that. Because SEPA applied to not just land use proposals or developments, and therefore is not subject to thirty six seventy Planning Enabling Act. Therefore, it is not put in front of the Planning Commission, because this is not just the planning matters. Almost all projects, except those exempt under WAC, one ninety seven, eleven, eight hundred, those are exempt proposals. Otherwise, most projects will require to go through some kind of SEPA review, whether the county planning department is the lead agency or not. And so I I think that sum up what I'd like to share with the board, and I'll answer any questions that you might have.
Okay. Would you, um, it was primarily the three flow charts that were the amendments, correct?
Amendments were made throughout the entire ordinance, because that ordinance was adopted long time ago, and we have not, um, do a comprehensive update. There are languages in there that we no longer use. For example, there are definitions for environmental review committee. And and I do not have any information about how this committee was come about. I never have any meeting with the environmental committee. Um, and so that's something that we no longer use. I suspect that was something before we even have a planning department. That's when we have that process. Therefore, you know, I eliminate that because we're not using that. So we are not just focusing on the administrative appeal process. Amendments were made throughout the documents, uh, but there are two main uh, substantial change, I would say substantial changes. One is for the administrative appeal process, and the other one is to correct the appeal period to coincide with, you know, how you count the appeal period, whether that's from the date of publication in the local newspaper or from the date a SEPA responsible official signed the determination. So those are the two main thing, but there are other changes, and I included the track changes versions in the packet just so everyone can see what changes were made.
Okay, uh, and what I meant from that was, we've, we've had the public hearing. Um, and so we asked you to make the changes over the last week, and I was saying, from the last week, the changes that you did was showing the, um, the track changes so that people could see that better, and then the three were the main changes from then till now. I just wanna be clear with the public what those changes are.
Correct. The, there's no change to the proposed ordinance at all. I just showed the track.
You showed the track change.
And then the additional information of the.
No, no, the the track changes in this. Before, we just had what? Now we can see the difference for discussion purposes is what we were looking for, and I thank you very much, Mochi. Okay, I, uh, I am going to open this public hearing for the purpose of hearing public uh, testimony in favor and opposed to considering the pro-opposed amendments to the Environmental Ordinance Number one, two, one, zero, eight, four, under the State Environmental Policy Act. Uh, RCW forty three, twenty one, C, one, twenty, and the SEPA rules, WAC, one, nine, seven, dash, eleven, dash, nine, zero, four. I have a list here of people who would like to testify. And as of last week, I'm going to go down this list first, and then I will open it up online to people who would like to testify. And I will open it back up to those, um, who would like to testify. And we are going to, as always, uh, there's three minutes, um, and we will begin with, uh, Ms. Deb Wagner from Goldendale.
She's gonna pass, cuz I still don't understand all the changes, and I can't give a testimony if I don't understand them. If you would put it, uh, if you would please put it in front of the Planning Commission so everyone can understand. I came here today with a testimony, but after listening to you for the last five minutes, I don't feel as though my testimony is appropriate. Okay, so I'm not gonna testify.
Okay, thank you very much, man. Okay, next, uh, Mister Greg Wagner.
Greg Wagner, Goldendale. I just would like to have the, the decisions made through the citizens, the Planning Commission. You know, let them be involved with this. So far, they haven't been. They should review this and make recommendations to you guys, and and the packet that came out. You know, it's like, it's on the website, but a lot of people don't even know how to find it. Unless you click on the more information link up above, you don't even know how to find it. I just found it this morning. I didn't get a chance to read it all. So, you know, to make full comment, I can't do it right now. I think there needs to be more discussion. I need, think there needs to be public meetings so that people can talk to you guys and Mochi and get the information so that they, when, when they come and make public testimony at a hearing, they can do it as an educated individual. You can't do it when the commission won't discuss these topics with the citizens in advance. So I would like to have public meetings and the dreaded word town hall, where you guys actually, you guys actually talk to the, talk to the citizens. I know your microphone.
You're, you're hearing. Put it farther away from the microphone.
I just think it's the citizens need to be more involved. You need to have meetings with them. This excluding us from the process other than it's on the website, most people don't even know how to find the website or find the information on the website. So it'd be nice to have more citizens' involvement up front with meetings where you tell us what's going on, give us the facts, let us make an educated learn from it and then make an educated comment. It's just unfair to keep people in the dark, even though you say, well, it's on the website. A lot of people don't know how to find it on the website. So that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Wagner. Okay, next we have Mister Dave Barta.
Dave Barta, Goldendale. Thank you, Commissioners. I don't pretend to be any expert on SEPA, that's for sure. I'm trying to learn more about the process, even at my extended state of decay. Since our earlier portion of the hearing, there's been quite a bit of discussion about, uh, I don't know how to phrase it, but I'll just call it the re- the relative insignificance of removing the citizen right to administrative appeal for non-project actions like SEPA. Um, much of the discussion has been basically around the idea, since it's not project, um, it's not as important, for example, and I guess I disagree with that um, position. I think if I asked, I actually don't think, I know if I asked any of the three of you in private conversation, if your desire was to remove um, rights from your constituents, I am certain that you would emphatically and sincerely say no. However, I think the effect of this restriction of appeals on non-project SEPA does exactly that. I encourage you to call the planning department like I did. Um, and if, and if you, if you can, and to see if it'll affect citizens locally, for example, in the future, the Dallasport Murdoch Planning Area or the Houston Beazee Planning Group, I don't remember what their formal name is. Ask, you might even ask the planning department, how many non-project SEPA appeals have even come before them? Um, and and figure out how much of an issue that is. You've discussed that update of the comprehensive plan recently, and I think all those mentioned groups should have the right to, uh, comment and appeal non-project SEPA's administrative if they need to. Um, the, because the future, their community is obviously very important to them. Consider the Energy Overlay Zone Ordinance, which most people agree is inadequate for the current circumstance. One of the principal authors stated in report, recorded public meeting, we never thought solar had a chance. Any reasonable person, I think, would agree that there are clear shortcomings in that ordinance. With the comm- uh, with the commissioner's potential action of removing um, administrative appeals for needed potential revision of the EOC, which would probably require a SEPA local citizens or citizen associations, whether in Dallasport or Beazee Corners or Trout Lake or here or anywhere. Um, they would, they might lose some opportunity to appeal decisions that affect them directly. You know, I know, again, if I asked you to further restrict the rights of your constituents, you'd say no. But I think the effect of accepting this very well may end up doing that in the future. I just wanna end with a, something that I read that that actually applies to me too. It says, and it's from RCW Title forty two, the legislature finds and declares all public commissions, boards, councils, committees, subcommittees, departments, divisions, offices, and all other public agencies of the state and subdivisions thereof exist to aid in the conduct of the people's business. It's the intent of the chapter that their actions be taken openly and that their deliberations be conducted openly. The people of the state do not yield their sovereignty to the agencies which serve them. The people in delegating authority do not give their public servants the right to decide what's good for them to know and what's not good for them to know. People insist on remaining informed so that they may retain control over the instruments they have created. I guess with respect to continuing to give people the, oh, the, the access to the process and ample process for recourse when they need it, I just request that the commissioners, um, would maintain the people's ability to to appeal administratively even for non-project SEPA, since those are the foundational documents which make future ordinance. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mister Barta. Next, we have Lori Zoller.
I'd like to echo, or Lori Zoller from Clickitack, Washington. I'd like to echo the comments of Mister Barta. I think he brought a lot of things to the table that I was going to talk about. The last thing that I would like to bring up that is my concern is I understand the weight of the SEPA appeals and what's happened over the years with the departments. Um, but I think I would advise that you really go out for some legal counsel on how this can be written or rewritten, so you don't exempt your normal citizen. Um, I think, I know, understand what the intent is for. Um, to take away some of those heavy burdens of those appeals that don't let us move forward a lot of times, but in the broad sense that it's written, it is going to impact just the general citizen. But in the broad sense that it's written, it is going to impact just the general citizen too. And I'm not in favor of taking away any rights from the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, that is the last of my list. We will go online for anyone who would like to provide public testimony with regards to the public hearing on the C P A ordinance update. Is there anyone who would like to provide public testimony? Please raise your hand, uh, turn on your mic, star six to unmute. Ms. Tracy.
Hello again, commissioners, and thank you for the chance to uh, speak. So I am going to go back to the C E M P, the Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan of November two thousand eight. And in that plan, it talks about the local political subdivisions may incur disaster-related obligations and expenditures per the provisions of R C W. Three, eight point five, two point zero, seven, zero. Uh, parentheses, two. And a declaration of emergency is required to activate the emergency powers defined by R C W thirty-eight point five, two. Um, and then it goes on to say, and, and I may, may I remind you, uh, commissioners, that. A proclamation of emergency was declared, and I don't know the date, but by Governor Inslee. In uh, when COVID started, you know, they declared the emergency. And the E L, the E O P, I think it's called, or the operations uh, department, you know, Jeff King. Um, was put into, into operations. Anyway, it says here that the emergency-related projects might, might require an environmental impact study or permit. Prior to final project approval. In some emergency situations, environmental review and permits may be waived or orally approved as per the following. State Envir- Environment Policy Act, or C P A, Environmental Review. WAC one ninety-seven, dash, ten, dash, one eighty. The Hydraulics Act, hydraulic permit. R C W seventy-five point two, oh, point one hundred. The Forest Practices Act. R C W seventy-six point oh, nine point oh, six, oh. And shorelines management uh, permits and flood control zones by state. So it says that those things can be waived during an emergency uh, proclamation from the governor. Now, we've had emergency proclamation from the governor for, since COVID started. So what is that, two thousand twenty? And I'm wondering how many of these C P A things were actually put into, into works because of the emergency proclamation? Or that, that gave you commissioners and the jurisdictions of the county. To do these things without the proper uh, C P A rules that usually. Are, are, you know, in effect when there isn't a proclamation of emergency. And if you could um, touch on that, and that is page twenty-nine of the C E M P is where you can find that information. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else online who would like to provide public testimony with regards to the C P A plan update? Star six, raise your hand, turn your video on, get our attention. Ms. Arnold. Can't hear you, Pat, yet.
That's because I haven't said anything.
Oh, that would be why.
I'm going to be reading because, and so I'm going to be staring at my paper, not at you guys, but here we go. Pat Arnold, Friends of the White Salmon River. We can do better than this. Click-It-Out County can be a rural community that cares for the land that sustains us. And will sustain those who come after us. We need to be putting our heads together, not endlessly fighting in hearings and in court. We can do that if we have a will to. First, we have to agree that protecting the land and the water and the air is also protecting ourselves. We are part of the earth and the land, not separate from it. Many people here understand this, including many in resource industries, farming, fishing, ranching, and forestry. But instead, the county is consistently writing ordinances like the present one and the C O and the shorelines with explicit intention of permitting damage. Every document, every discussion is focused and focused on respecting private property rights. Allowing everyone to do what they see fit on land they hold title to, regardless of the consequences. Commissioner Anderson spoke last week, as he frequently does, about his frustration over the C P A appeal of the Houston B Z Comp Plan Update. In matter of fact, the plan was inadequate. For example, a section called Sensitive Areas had only one goal, protect life and property from natural disaster and hazards. That's fine, but the section should also have addressed the preservation and protection of critical areas such as wetlands, habitat conservation areas, and aquifer recharge areas. The issues raised in that appeal had merit, as recognized by the Superior Court, where the appeal won on every count. At the next level, State Appeals Court, we never got to see the court's decision. Because the county withdrew their case after oral arguments were heard. Why? Afraid of the outcome from the appeals court? Who knows? Commissioner Anderson continues to characterize the appeal as baseless on the merits. And as a petulant actor, a few dissatisfied people who didn't get their way. That's just plain wrong, as the record shows. We can find and build on some common ground, but it requires you, the county government and the powers that be. To start taking responsibility for your part in these battles, which are doing nobody any good. You need to make objectively better decisions on policy and on project applications. You need to acknowledge that human survival depends on the earth's continuing good health, which is imperiled at the present time. As a first step, I invite Commissioner Anderson to meet with the appellant in the Houston B Z case to resolve our differences. And there are other steps we could take after that. Two specific comments. Section B twenty to forty to zero twenty, Critical Areas is a sad example of how Click-It-Out County chooses to permit damage instead of limiting, limiting it. State law permits exclusion of some categorical, categorical exemptions for projects in critical areas. This draft chooses to allow all categorical exemptions. An appeal is complicated to put together, reducing the time allowed to file an appeal certainly makes it more difficult for the appellant. Friends of the White Salmon speak against the change to the C P A appeal process. We speak in favor of all of us working together to make Click-It-Out County the best place it can be. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Arnold. Okay, is there anyone else who would like to provide public testimony with regards to the C P A update? Online, star six. Turn your video on, raise your hand, get our attention. Okay, I will go back to the room one last time. I think everybody in the room has provided comments. Oh, you have not? Okay. All right, you are correct. I don't see your name on here. Please come forward, Ms. Bosque.
Good afternoon again. I am very impressed with some of the people's um, comments and. Um, I thank them for looking into this. I also agree with, I do, I do not feel that the um, people have been educated on these changes. As far as I go, my opinion is, um, I had some written and I don't know if it's. Okay, I'll just go with this. I oppose the proposed changes to the Title twenty C P A appeal process. I especially oppose, oppose the change in which the county has taken away administrative appeal on non-project actions. The specific C P A appeal changes proposed will take away county responsibilities and oversight of non-project actions. Such as rezoning decisions. And I want to interject that this has a direct effect. Obviously, as Ms. Arnold had commented, and this goes very deep and this is very complicated. And at the end of the day, it takes away from the people and, and where they live and their abilities to appeal. Again, it's very confusing, so. Um, but I, I say that this stays with the people. And considering this is a big uh, change, and I, again, it being confusing, not being educated, like I'd like to be. Other people have spoken and they. They are very concerned with these changes. And since this is such a high topic of the people who are in the know somewhat right now. Of what the county is trying to pass in these ordinances. And uh, obviously what great effect it has in our future. And how it affects people in their local areas and our ability to have say in a C P A environmental. Um, you know, just a non-project that it has great, great effect on us. So I'd like the commissioners to take this changing proposal you have, Title twenty C P A process appeal. In front of the planning commission. Let them take a look at it, you know? Again, I was really impressed with them. And um, how I felt they were volunteer citizens and very, very, very concerned for the future of Click-It-Out County. And is you, I, I'm sure, concerned for our future of Click-It-Out County in a healthy way, I hope. Is that you do put this in front of this committee, you do get their feedback, you do get. You know, some more understanding. Again, this is a great change. It tries to be downplayed, and it's not. It's not a downplay thing. This has great effect on us. Um, and I've gone off thing because I, I agree with so many other people. But my only uh, thing I've had to add is put this in front of the planning commission. Let them look at these changes. Let them advise and put input to you guys. If this is a good change for our county. Otherwise, it just seems like you're just going to move forward with these no appeal, no administrative appeal. Options, which forces the people who object to these and want to make an appeal in the future to, that we have to hire an attorney and then. You know, pay for this, like we just had to do with Under Canvas, and then the county in return uses our taxpayer money against us. So put this in front of the planning commission, get some more information. This is a, a huge, huge decision that affects everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bosque. Okay, I will open it up one last time to those online, because now I think we have everyone in the room. If you would like to provide public testimony with regards to the C P A update. Elaine Harvey.
Elaine Harvey in Goldendale. Um, yes, I did read the documents, the flow charts that um, I reluctantly found on the agenda. On the commissioner's agenda, you have to click on um, that little thing that's not even highlighted. Um, to find Mochi's memo. And her track changes. And I did request a, request information, additional information from Mochi. In regards to the, this ordinance change that you all want to make. And um. After reading through the track changes, I've seen other deletions that Mochi made that aren't really related to the appeal process. And um, in regards to fees and um. And I believe also, as others already spoken, that, that these changes would take away um, local residents. I'm talking as a resident of Click-It-Out County. That it would take our rights away to appeal. I mean, yes, we could appeal, but we don't have millions of dollars for. A whole bunch of attorneys in the court fees to appeal something in the E O Z or the Critical Ordinance. Um, area ordinance or the shoreline master plan or the comprehensive plan that could impact where we live, our property rights and so forth. So um, yes, changes to this ordinance does impact local residents um, in the county and. And um, you know, I'm not rich and many of us are enriched millionaires and can afford these attorneys to go to the court. To appeal something we don't agree with and um, in these non-project actions. So um, that's just what I like to say today and as a resident of the county. Thanks.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Harvey, and uh, I will also note that I received your email um, on this as well. Okay, is there anyone else who would like to provide public testimony with regards to the C P A update? Online or in the room, of course. This is your last chance. Hearing none, I'm going to plug, close the public comment on the C P A update and move into uh, board. Uh, requesting clarification of public statements or questions of the staff. Uh, Commissioner Christopher.
I have a question for our planning director and you.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, I was gonna have her turn her mic on over there if she wanted to. Either way. For clarification, I get from the testimony that this is a big change. And this is going to affect the citizens on a weekly basis. Um, kind of thing, so it, it seems that way from the testimony. How many um, administrative appeals of non-project C P A actions have we had? In the last year or ten years or can you give me a ballpark on how often there is an appeal of a uh. Uh, administrative, uh, an administrative appeal of a non-project C P A determination? How often that happens?
Not very often, because we do not go through any kind of non-project action, like frequently.
Has it happened in five years? Maybe? It's that hard to figure out. It's, it's not common.
It's not common, because we haven't been going through those processes. Um, we did have administrative C P A appeal on the shoreline master program. We started the process, we issue a C P A threshold determination, it was appealed. And so that S N P update's been on hold until recently that we withdrew the C P A appeal. And put that on, basically put that aside until we can work on the Critical Areas Update. Um, the Critical Areas Update, we started a couple of years back or a few years back. We also issue a C P A threshold determination. We did receive public comments and phone calls from interested parties and. Um, essentially is saying that they are going to appeal unless, you know, something else happened. You know, we, you know, withdrew or uh, reissue a determination of significance. From planning department or C P A responsible official standpoint. The reason we're doing all those updates is because we recognize what we have today is may not meet the minimum requirement per the state requirement. We want to update and make sure that we meet all the qualifications that is required out there. Uh, but we haven't been very successful. So for the last five years, I, I say. One or two, because that's all the legislative action that we, we have time to work on, uh, those two.
And the question I had for you earlier that I told you I was gonna ask. Can you give me the available options? If we do not remove the option for uh, C P A appeal of a non-specific, non-project administrative appeal action? What we could do? In its place.
Okay, so I, this is also in response to Commissioner Anderson's question to me last, like, last time, two weeks ago. So essentially, for all C P A determination, it has to link to an underlying project or action, whether that's legislative. Or say specific proposal. We cannot, or, you know, issue a C P A threshold with no project relates to it. And there are some exceptions. In the state rules that we do not require to consolidate the public hearing. For the C P A appeal with the underlying action, whether there's a public hearing or um. An appeal to the administrative decision, for example, like uh, short subdivision. That does not require, go through a public hearing just for the project itself. But we, we have a C P A appeal um, on the short plant. And I issue a preliminary approval and someone appealed the underlying action. Both the C P A appeal and the. Um, decision can come before the board. But for non-project action, those are one of the few things that is under the exception. That we are not required to consolidate the hearing. Although it's up to the commissioners to decide if you want to have a separate public hearing on the C P A first. And then proceed with the underlying recommendation from the planning commission. Um, you can choose to consolidate the hearing, but it's entirely up to you to decide. And that's when we have the administrative appeal process for C P A available. That's the route that we would take. Um, essentially, it's no difference than like, as stated in the flow charts. If we have a proposal that require a public hearing before the planning commission. If anyone wants to appeal their C P A determination. We'll wait to have that public hearing until the planning commission issue a recommendation. Then both of the recommendation and the C P A appeal would come before the Board of County Commissioner. For closed record appeal, meaning no new additional information can be provided. All your decision will be based on what is on file for that project.
Which even that, I would, I would say would anger the public. Because they didn't get involved in the original action, but they would be involved standing here. Because they just learned about it and they think they should. Be able to say something here when it's a closed record action.
And I want to.
I don't know that there's a fix, is, I guess.
I, I do, I'm sorry, I do want to. I, I do, I'm sorry, I do want to clarify, emphasize, CIPA. Is, is one process. And then the review of the underlying action is another process that is parallel. So we will continue to accept public comment and get the public to involve to comment on the proposal. To, to provide meaningful comment to the planning department so we can share that with the planning commission for a good recommendation to the county commissioner. But it's not necessarily like environmentally related. To the proposal. For the CIPA portion of it is, is something that you, we want to talk about that is not already covered under current regulations or ordinances. If you already have a critical areas ordinance requires certain setback to a stream. The, the CIPA does not make you have additional buffer. It, we will still subject to those regulations as in place and if they cannot meet those setbacks, they need to either not to have the project. Moving forward or they will need to provide mitigation. So it, it, it's entirely up to the board to decide whether we want to continue to have the administrative appeal process for non-project action. It's just an option for you because that's really common in other jurisdictions as well. Yes.
It's common to do it the way we're discussing.
Yes, because the state rules allow local government to have our own CIPA procedures. We can have administrative appeal process for all action types, or we can pick and choose. What is most suitable to the local environment. We have this process for many years and if you choose to continue to have that, it's entirely up to the board, of course. But that would just be an option for discussion today. The entire goal for us to propose the update to the CIPA ordinance is really is to provide a clear picture. For, for the board, for staff and for the public to understand. Whenever there's a CIPA appeal, you could change the course of the action for the permit reveal process. Sometimes once you, you, you have a CIPA appeal, then we have to switch to legislative body to hear the CIPA appeal. And state law requires if you have this public hearing before the legislative body. Even though the underlying actions such as the conditional use permit normally would go before the board of adjustments. Now, because they are not a legislative body, they can no longer has the right to hear the application. Everything has to be consolidated in one public hearing before one hearing body. And most often that's the Board of County Commissioner unless you choose to. You know, designate a hearing examiner.
One other question I have is. Um, I'm assuming um. Non-project actions for CIPA appeals. Does the appeals fee based on the project cost? I can't imagine it would be over the million dollar number. So what would appeals fee be on a? Non-project action CIPA appeal, do you know?
Under the currency fee ordinance is $4,000 for all legislative action.
So if they were gonna appeal a non-project action CIPA appeal that we're talking about here, $4,000 is the number.
Correct, under the current ordinance.
That all?
That's all I have, sweet.
Hey, Commissioner Satter.
I don't really have a question. Actually, I'll, I'll wait. I'll wait. I have some comments and I, this is question. So I'll wait.
Okay, I will take some time then. Okay, you deleted in section two general requirements. A and B, and that was the projects to exceed a million dollars be billed for the actual costs. Are you just cleaning up the language so that all that will be taken care of in the other fee schedule?
That's the intent.
Okay, so, so we're not having it in two places in essence, right?
Cause if we add up a new fee schedule and if we still have this one in the current ordinance, that will have discrepancy between county codes.
Got it. Okay.
I did, I did one that was. So this, we received testimony that was talking about taking this proposal to amend the CIPA ordinance. To the planning commission for a um, you know, a recommendation. Is. Is this considered a legislative action that that would be the appropriate? I mean, is that even a, is that even a tool that's available? Cause sometimes I think there's confusion about the role. I mean. Traditionally, I mean, planning commissions, board of adjustments, they have very specific roles that they are empowered. To hear. They are not just a general body that can. You know, be fleshed out. You know, topics that are contentious or out in the community. That's not typically their role. Am I incorrect in that? I mean, we use them as that sometimes because often a land use thing that is a legislative action, that is the contentious issue that they get with. But could you, can you elaborate on that?
My understanding is the planning commission or the board of adjustments. Is created under R C W thirty-six seventy.
Right.
Planning Enabling Act. And that is really subject to planning related issues. And like I mentioned earlier, CIPA is applicable to.
Right, it's not.
More than just planning issues. And therefore I believe is, you know, this will fall under the powers of legislative authorities, R C W thirty-six thirty-two one twenty, subsection seven.
Okay.
Okay, my next question. And this goes to twenty twenty-eight thirty appeals. And that would be for project actions, appeals of the intermediate steps under CIPA. Example, the lead agency determination, scoping and draft E I S adequacy that shall not be allowed. So, so has that been previously allowed?
The current CIPA ordinance is. Not clear in many aspects.
Okay.
Some of the. Appeal that we receive if my read of the state requirement, we. Probably shouldn't allow that to happen because they not necessarily have an underlying action to that. Intermediate CIPA determinations such as scoping or draft E I S because that's not the final CIPA determination. That's just the steps to get through. If a threshold determination of significance, a D S is issued. This process that you have to go through such as the scoping process, prepare the draft E I S. Receive comments on the draft E I S and then we need to address those comments before we can issue the final E I S. So the final yes should be the determination of the final document. If anyone wants to appeal, that should be the, the product. We should not appeal something that is in the middle of the process, that is not even the final decision. And, and therefore we want to clarify and make sure, you know, there's something that people understand. They can appeal the threshold determination, D S, if they want to. But there's really no appeal, administrative appeal process available for scoping. The draft E I S because that's just in the middle of the process. Until we get to the final product, which is the final E I S. And that one would be the final decision or not even a decision, the final documents of the county. And that is something that they can appeal.
So. So what you're saying in this instance, because now we're, we're back to the project. So I apologize. We're back to the project actions now that we're talking about. And so I'm, I'm stepping to the other, the other lane really quick. And so what you're saying though. Trust me, it's. What you're saying though is, is that, that when you issue your determination of significance. There is, and that is not an intermediate step, you could, there could be an appeal of the CIPA at that point.
Yes.
Okay, and so that would be either the applicant would appeal saying, no, it should be an M D N S. Or actually, that's about the only thing I could think would appeal that.
You'd never know.
Yeah, you'd never know.
We're gonna find out.
So, so what you're saying though is, is you're creating a check and a balance there so that, that when you issue that D S. That can be appealed. Once you've issued that D S, and I'm, I'm doing this for everybody's education here. Once you issue that D S, then you go to scoping. Right? And you're going, you're going to look and say, what are, what are the potential impacts? What do we need to look at? What do we need to do in order to do these things? And at that point, you're also going to ask the public. Cause usually when you have a scoping meeting, the public comes in and says, what do you think we need to do? Correct?
We will have the scoping process. It's not necessarily always have a public meeting. They can submit written comment, email, but we don't always have a, a meeting, in-person meeting.
But, but, but there, but there's still a, a place for comment so that you can hear what everybody else. You may think that they don't need to, that whatever the project is, they don't need to do a geotechnical study. But somebody may comment and say, no, actually, we think that they need to do a geotechnical study, correct?
Right, correct.
And under our current code, it is not clear. Whether they can appeal your decision on what needs to be done after the scoping.
Under the current rule, it doesn't even reference um, any kind of intermediate CIPA determination. In the current code, you talk about um, any agreed party can appeal the CIPA threshold determination. D N S, M D N S, or D S. And then there's also another line to say that people can also appeal the adequacy of the final E I S. That's it. There's nothing in there to say, but there's always questions there. And the goal to this amendment is to provide as much information and clarify a lot of the questions we got asked over the years. To include that in this document to try to make it easier for everyone to understand and refer to.
Okay, it's, and I'm using this because I think project actions are what we deal with the most amount. Okay, and so in this instance, I'm walking everybody through the process. Somebody can appeal the, the, you know, the D S or the E I S or, you know, or the, the D. Somebody can appeal your decision. And then as it is currently worked, you will go like if it's an E, if you say an E I S needs to be done. You'll go through scoping, you'll go through all the processes and at the end of that. Someone can still do an administrative appeal. Of that decision of that E I S or F E I S at that point to the Board of County Commissioners.
Correct.
And that, and that stays. So the people's rights remain with regards to those project-specific actions. In that instance, we still haven't even begun talking about the actual underlying.
Project.
Project.
Right, so they can appeal the final E I S. And then I will alert the board that is being appealed. Depending on what the type of the underlying project, for example, if this is a E O Z permit, then we will consolidate. Cause what would happen is I would then issue the, and the E O Z permit. And then we'll wait for the appeal period to be over and believe this twenty days. And then we receive appeal on the underlying action, in this case, the E O Z permit, then I would take both. Before the board. The board has authority to hear the CIPA portion of it. However, in the zoning ordinance, all E O C appeal go before the hearing examiner is already in the zoning ordinance. So in these instances, the board will need to decide whether, you know, you, you want to hear both or. Upon the hearing examiner, because you can have only one hearing body.
Get split it.
Got it. Okay, so for instance, say there is a large project that comes forward and you, you issue. And it's under a conditional use permit, large project. And you issue a, a D S. Okay, and somebody goes through the entire E I S process. And at the end of that process, if nobody appeals. The underlying action will go in front of the B O A.
Correct, the board of adjustment, yes.
That's, that is the process. Somebody spent all this time. Now, if you go through that entire process and somebody appeals the CIPA. After a full E I S, then it will, there is no chance that it will go in front of the B O A. It will either go in front of the B O C C. Or a hearings examiner.
Correct.
Correct, okay. So, so at any time. We are, in, in essence, you are, somebody gets to choose their own path. You know what I'm saying? If some.
Somebody gets it chosen for them based on somebody else's appeal.
Or if somebody, a third party appeals it, then it gets chosen for them. And there is nothing we can do because that is state law. That's the project-specific actions. And, and I know when we talked, that was kind of the choose your own path. I, I love the flow charts. I think that was great. And I think we're gonna need to do the same thing for those project-specific actions so that people can see where they want to go. With regards to um, the comments. And I mean, we're going way back, like I don't know, I don't even want to go that far back. With regards to the non-project specific actions. And you, and, and so Dan asked the question, how many of these have we had? That's a great question. My question is, of the ones that we've had, how many get, how many CIPA appeals are there? What percentage would you say? Is it the majority? Is it the vast majority? Is it all of them?
I really can.
speculate.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Well, if I can rephrase. Of the non-project actions of which we have not had many. How ma, how many of those have not been appealed? The CIPA has not been appealed.
Can't think of.
I can't think of any, but I'm maybe.
Yeah, I can't think of any either. I'm, I'm just thinking for the time that I'm employed.
Right, so that's nine.
Does that.
Fourteen years.
Does that appeal usually stop the county's momentum on wanting to update a comp plan and potentially put solar ordinances in it? Has it in the past? When's the last time the comp plan has been updated?
Twenty fifteen, but it's very limited amendment. For the most part, in the past, the commissioners chose not to consolidate those public hearings, so we always have to resolve to CIPA appeal. Before we proceed with the actual underlying action. So.
If you guys have.
I don't. I'm, ten things for discussion, but no more questions.
So I guess um. From your perspective, this is not something that can be sent back to the planning commission as this is not planning. This is, this, this touches on much more than planning.
Legislative.
I believe this is not just planning related. There's, you know, a, a lot of other departments go through their own CIPA process. So I do, I. I wouldn't recommend sending that to planning commission because it will limit that to only to planning actions, which CIPA is not.
Right. Okay, thank you. That, that helps a lot. Quite, further questions?
No, comments, but we're in questions now.
Let me make sure I've got all of my answers. I, I really appreciate your track changes. That really has helped me. Those were all the questions that I had. Oh, where was that? Like to get those answered.
Back to the previous non-project actions, just since we're, we're trying to remember together. And you said that the board has, we have not um. Chose to consolidate where we have taken them separately, the CIPA and whatever the, the non-project action was, whether that was a. Sub-area update or, or whatever. Are we, can we think back of when have we ever, have we had any consolidated one? I mean, I, and I can speak for myself as far as the, the rationale for that was. I mean, I, and I can speak for myself as far as the, the rationale for that was that if there were, if there was a SEPA challenge, uh, to the non-project action, that you need to get that settled because the, the, if that, if you change something or found that the SEPA was inadequate or we missed something, then that, then the non-project action might have been different based on, it has to be redone. And so then it, and, and I will say, so I'm trying to recall if we, I don't believe we've ever, at least in the last 10 years, and that is, I mean, I can say that's part of the reason when we talk about we have had near paralysis with updating things. That's the pro- that's been the reason and other reasons. And to, to Ms. Arnold's comments, it's not, it's, it's not, that's not the only reason. It's not. I mean, these are really hard, difficult things to do, but it does take the momentum away. It does when you're trying to, and, um, you know, when there is a, when there's an appeal, it, it's years of while you're trying to settle that before you can move on to the thing that really is what the, usually is what people want to talk about. It's the, it's the zoning change. It's the whatever it is. And, and so.
And just to add on to that, the thirty-six seventy B, the local project review wasn't coming into place until mid-nineties. So anything before that, rightfully so, the county can choose how we handle that. We have the SEPA ordinance since the early seventies, you know? And so that's, we seems to have a tendency, but this is how things were so that we just continue to do that. And that's why the, one of my goal of making the, all these changes is to clarify a lot of things that we might need to put the sidebar and make sure we are consistent with the current state requirements.
Okay. Any questions before I open this back up? All right. I am going to close this, uh, section and move into if there are any further public comments from anyone who has not had a chance, um, to speak. And correct me if I'm wrong, I'm not allowed to open that up to anyone who spoke before.
Generally not.
That's what I thought. I'm making sure I got a nod or anything from prosecuting attorney. Don't know.
As you get. One bite at the apple. All right. That's what I thought. One bite at the apple.
Is there anyone in the room or online who would like to provide public comment? Or public testimony with regards to the SEPA update process? I am not seeing anyone. I am really sorry, Pat. I would love to meet with you and chat with you. Uh, we only get one bite at the apple, according to the tradition and history. Or whatever the rules are. From what you've known. Okay. All right. I am not seeing any. I am going to close this further public hearing to further public testimony and we'll open up, uh, discussion by the board, uh, my seatbelt. Discussion.
I'm liable to put my foot in my mouth, so I have to be careful here.
My attention.
I was gonna say, I'm sure you're just waiting. I find it frustrating, very frustrating. That I, I honestly believe that the majority of the testimony we have received are right people that don't have a full grasp uh, or an education about all the factors that they're testifying about. I think we have people that are testifying opposed just because this board is trying to do something. And by all means, we're terrible and despicable, so they need to oppose it because we're up to no good. And it's really unfortunate because I don't think, that's the case. That I think it's, it's frustrating that the same people that want these plan updates and want these ordinances are pushing for a roadblock that will stop them from happening. But the people are all knowing. And if that's what the people want, I'm game. So I'm my, my opinion. Well, I will hold my opinion in my answer, barring further comment.
Um, I would, I would share your frustration. I think the point, I, I think the issue before us, you know, we, we went afield and I led the way into the weeds a few times myself. But really the issue that's in front of us right now, and, and I think you teed it up right, is the, the critical thing that's in the uh, amendment is, do we want to remove administrative appeals of non-project actions? That's really the big question that's in front of us. And then the, the second piece, which I don't think is, is, is as critical. And the rest is just basically cleaning stuff up and eliminating language that's outdated, gone, refers to things that aren't even in, um, title anymore in, in other places. So it's not that. That's a, I mean, that's a serious, and I, and I think folks have a right to be legitimately concerned about not having that that is, we are eliminating an, an opportunity for people to appeal. That's true. And I am, I'm struggling a little bit with divorcing my experience of past practice from what the future would necessarily hold. And if I use the past as a guide, then I'm a yes. Because I feel like it is in past practice, there, those appeals for the most part have been non-productive. They have not served the purpose of what the SEPA appeal process is even for. It was, it was weaponized. It was a tool. Was it legitimate or ill? No, I mean, people could use that. That's a tool that's available to them. If they wanted to jam up whatever was going on, they used it and it was a tool that was available to them and they can do that. That said, it is hard for me to eliminate and say, yeah, everybody in the future is going to do, is going to continue to do that. And so we should just, you know, let's just get to court and be done with this. So I am conflicted because I, I think, you know, if you assume a positive intent, then it's, the appeal process should stay the way it is, or at least that, that the, we have administrative appeal available to people. And that we try to make it so people don't abuse it, even though we're going to have zero control over whether they abuse it or not. And as I said, past practice shows me they will abuse it, but do you, you just take it away from them because it's, they're not really using it the way they're supposed to use it. So as far as all the other stuff, as far as in there, all the cleans up and everything, I have no problem with any of that stuff. I'm fine with the language. I think it's long overdue. Get rid of it, clean it up. I'm still, I'm not taking a place necessarily, but that's my thought process on the administrative appeal of non-project actions. So that was my non-answer.
Can I, can I go back and add to that in clarification of my statement? That is, that is essentially where I'm at too. I think there's twenty-four thousand people in this county that we're supposed to represent. And it's, this county has a history of a very small percentage, jamming up the wheels. Uh, and that in turn hurts the other twenty-three thousand nine hundred and fifty-five. And that's unfortunate. But, um, if that's the direction we want to go.
All right. I will say, I have seen the SEPA process in my time in Clickedat County used as weapon. Absolutely. Um, when you are in court, you use all weapons available to you and whatever you do to get what you want. And that has definitely had a long-ranging, long-term impact on updating ordinances in Clickedet County. We are not special. Other jurisdictions, cities, counties, everyone go through the same processes and the same issues. When you were, if you were to use these in a, the SEPA process as a weapon, uh, it does not matter if you have an administrative process or strictly the judicial process. Either way, it will go through the judicial process. That is just what we can see from the past, um, because that is how you get finality. With that said, um, this one I'm, I'm, I'm a bit conflicted on because uh, we are trying to do what people want us to do, what we are asked to do on a regular basis. Update your ordinances. Bring your ordinance up, up to date, bring your codes up to date, clarify, give us what we, so we understand that we can go through the process and it'll work for us. This is a primary example of us attempting to do that, I believe. And modernize the SEPA, uh, process and clarify the SEPA process. And I think having seen all of the things that you have done, Moche, you did a very fine job with what you did. You took the stuff out of the SEPA that belongs in the fee schedule area so that that can be updated and not have conflicts. We see conflicts between our critical areas ordinance and our shorelines management plan. We see conflicts in almost any code after, you know, the attempts after attempt after attempt to try to update things. I think that this is a very large, complex issue that it is hard for people to wrap their minds around. I think anytime there is a non-project specific proposal, it is very difficult for people to wrap their minds around, including people who are on community councils who've been there, have been through it, people who've been on the Planning Commission. These things are incredibly complex. I think that between everyone standing here, our goal is to talk about the actual issue. We very rarely get to the actual issue because we get hung up on talking about what the SEPA says. And we can disagree about anything in a SEPA all the time. And so what happens is, is whenever there's disagreement, somebody has to come in and make the decision. And, and I think that this is a primary example of how I've always asked the question and Commissioner Sodder started it, is local planning dead? And when I see something that's broken, I want to fix it. That's just my personality. That's my mentality. And local planning has been dead for a while. And this was one way asking our super responsible official and planning director to find a way that we can hopefully fix it so that we can come to the understanding of how do we actually talk about the real issues? I definitely do not want to take anyone's rights away from them. The administrative appeal process is one of two processes. Either way, there is still the appeal. Either way, there is still the clarification that, um, you do not get to, because everyone has rights. And a person that wants to do a project has rights. And if you want to, as you said, gum up the system, there's a very easy way of doing that. And that is, is that you're going to appeal currently, you're going to appeal, um, the DNS or the DS. If it's an, if it's an MDNS, you're going to appeal that asking for a DS. Then you can come in and you can appeal, um, the scoping. Or you can appeal the adequacy, or you can appeal, and it's, and it's a constant rolling of appeals in order to just gum the system up. Where in the end, you never even get to talk about the actual action. Could be a decade, could be a long time. And, and I appreciate that you're trying to make it so that it is equitable on both sides, that you always have a right to appeal. You always have a right to judicial review. If we are going to update our codes and ordinances and everything, we have to have very clear rules and rationale and procedures from getting from point A to point B. And I think you've done a really good job. You've put a lot of hard work and effort into this. Me personally, because there's so much here, because we only have so much time. If this were, um, the zoning ordinance or this were any other ordinance that was planning, like the, the, um, critical areas or shorelines. Yes, absolutely. This would go in front of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission could debate this for a year. They could debate it for five meetings. They could all be educated on it. Where, where SEPA does not just touch planning, I, I agree with you. I don't feel that that's the appropriate place for it. Even though I would love to shove it off onto them. Would absolutely love to do that. But I agree, uh, in your interpretation that that's not the appropriate place. With that, I will be honest, I have reviewed this. I've fallen asleep to it. I've continued to read it. I read it through lunch and I fell asleep to it in trying to understand that I'm not missing anything. And I think the discussion for the board, uh, will likely be on this one thing, the non-project specific actions. Everything that I found a- on all the other things, like the very, being very clear that, that the, an important one to me was, very clearly that the Board of County Commissioners has the right, as we have used in the past and currently, that the SEPA appeal can be heard by a hearings examiner if we so choose. Because some of these things are incredibly complex. And if I am to be honest, where I think we have made mistakes in the past, it hasn't been on what was actually written. It was the procedure when it goes in front of the judge. And when it goes in front of the judge in the procedure, I am no attorney. I'm not a land use attorney. And I tried to speak from the heart and I tried to let everyone know how I feel. But when it comes to writing the findings of fact with regards to a non-project specific, very large overarching SEPA determination, I don't feel that I have the educational experience. Even with my background, working for the county and everything to write that, that it will make it through the judicial appeal. And I think that is, that is what has usually gummed us up in the past. It hasn't been what you actually wrote or the EIS or anything. It was the procedure that we got there or how we ruled and our findings of fact when it comes down to it. And I think that's where it, it sways me one direction because if it is the EIS and it's only the EIS that, that has been provided, then, and then it goes in front and there's no, um, administrative appeal. And it, because I'll be honest, uh, on, on a non-project specific action on administrative appeal, where there's likely going to be lawsuits based on our history, it's likely going to have to go through a hearings examiner because that's what makes sense on that side of it. And then it'll likely go into the judicial appeal. And as we've seen, a hearings examiner knows the law and knows how to write for the law. We don't. Our findings of fact look nothing like a hearings examiner's finding of fact. And so that sways me one direction, but yet even though I'm still not per- personally ready to take a vote on this, I've got more, um, comments that people have given that I want to think about and ensure because like it's been said, the last thing I want to do is take away anyone's rights. What I want to do is I want to update our codes. I want to update our codes, uh, successfully, thoroughly, and ensure that everyone's voice is heard while we do that. That's my.
Well, I guess that's the question of where do we go from here? And that's up to each one of us, but I will tell you where I'm at. Where I would go from here is to hold this over, uh, return it back to the planning director for the removal of the removal of the SEPA appeal for non-project actions from this document and then bring it back before for considerization and signing. And give the people what they want.
I have an alternative is to carry it over. Don't make a decision on, because you are basically, if we do that, we're making a decision on that one key component. And I'm, I'm, I'm still sorting through, I'm not ready for that yet. I'm, I'm still sorting through. And I, and I appreciate the testimony that we receive. I mean, it, we've been really thinking about this because this is a, this- we've been really thinking about this because this is a, this is a change and I, I don't know where I'm at on this yet. So I would, Mr. Chairman, if you would, I would make a motion that we continue this hearing to, do we have time next week? At a time to be determined. Close to further public comment for deliberation and an eventual decision by the board. So that's my motion. Can you second that?
I'm thinking. They want to throw an amendment on there.
I'll give you a moment.
No, I'll second that.
There has been a motion in a second to continue this hearing until next week, as sometime during the afternoon with this hearing closed to further public testimony. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you, Mochi.
Thank you, Mochi, for all of your hard work. And you thought we'd be getting out of here.
What is it, lunch?
Five o'clock somewhere.
Anybody want to consent?
I'm trying to get my work, sorry. Consent. Mr. Chairman, I make a move, motion that we approve the consent agenda with eleven items.
I'll second that.
There's a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda with all eleven items. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carry.
Miss Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the accounts payable warrants in amount of two hundred and fifty thousand, sixty-five dollars and twenty-seven cents. And the payroll benefit warrants in the amount of seven hundred and twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars and ninety-five cents for the date ending May ninth, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
There's a motion in a second to pay the bills, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay. New business, we have nothing unfinished business, we don't have anything. Is one thing I had is is that next week we had a Wednesday workshop. And we are going to be putting those on throughout the Tuesday meeting, so we will have no Wednesday workshop. So our Wednesday workshop was going to be with Mochi and, and potentially Rob. And we are going to stick them in our holes on Tuesday so that we don't have to have a Wednesday workshop. There were, it was, it wasn't going to take up a whole lot of time for a workshop.
As far as this next one.
This next Tuesday.
Does that mean we will be having all potential discussions about all topics?
No, it'll have its own place.
Agenda out of Tuesday.
For what we were going to talk about on the workshop on Wednesday. Which was the fee, fee schedule.
Schedule for wastewater.
Planning.
Well, but also what's going to be on that workshop was Delsport wastewater discussions.
Was that on the?
It was going to be. Unless you change it to a Tuesday, and then I'm fine with that too.
I mean, I'm just saying, if we don't need to start at ten o'clock, we can start a little earlier.
We can spend the whole day if we want, but.
I just, I just, I would like to have that discussion. And if we're canceling the discussion off of the workshop day, I would like to have it on the regular meeting day. One way or the other, and I will leave that up to my seatmates on which day they choose.
Are you ready?
I don't want to wait until next month.
Yeah, no, I think we can.
Going on with the wastewater.
Yeah, I mean, I think I'll be able to report because that's a week from now, so yeah. I'll report additional information because I think we need to have that conversation.
And, and choose a direction and yeah.
Okay, and we should be able to fit all that into the agenda, you believe? Okay, is that work for you?
Good enough, yep.
And if you change your mind, we can always, if you don't think we can do it, then we can always advise, yep, and we'll make a decision, it'll be on the agenda. Okay, anything else from?
No, I'm, I'm done.
Nope. Well, not yet. All right, we are going to move to the prosecuting attorney, David Canal, for pending issues. Some of which may qualify for executive session in accordance with RCW forty-two thirty-one ten-one. Issues of a general nature will of course be discussed in open session.
Sir.
Thank you.
Oh, he gave me two.
This is picking up on a conversation from last last week and several weeks previously, it's part of an ongoing conversations, it's actually been going on for a few years. I spent, I can start a lot of time this weekend going through. First off, I express my appreciation to the Human Resources Department, Rob Van Cleve is very helpful. He had some frameworks and he took the initiative and gave me some materials and then kind of reworking them substantially over the weekend and circled back to him again, a fair amount of time yesterday on trying to come forward with a, a concrete proposal that hopefully is within the realm of possibility to address ongoing issues related to recruitment and retention of the prosecuting attorneys. One of the prime issues that I think we identified is the current county pay schedules and classification process does not take into account some of the unique features involving some of the attorneys, they, there's, for example, one of the main factors for the qualification, the classification analysis is on educational attainment caps out of the bachelor, so there's no additional credit for the higher level pay scales. You know, going through the comps, as Mr. Soder pointed out, the comps are one thing, but if the comps aren't getting the job done either, that's more systemic problem. We definitely have a systemic issue. There's really, I've spent years working on different issues through utilization of, of deputies perform coroner services to highlighting the county benefits, the county acceptance and willingness to subsidize the continuing legal education requirements and so forth. We're just the, basically at an impasse, and so the proposal is to frankly, to be a market leader in the gorge area. You know, I'm always been a straight shooter with this board and previous boards and not trying to hide that at all, the, you know, the, a little bit of background, you know, I think most people know that be scrupulous and their requests that are made through the budgetary process and I don't make requests just to, to try to expand or, or what have you without identifying a critical need. And I know that, you know, we've, we've turned, under my watch, the last seven years, we've returned an excess of seven figures every extremely high confidence of the statement, returned over six figures every single year as to the budget amount to the general fund or, or did not draw upon the, I guess, the more appropriate ways to, did not draw upon the general revenue. We've never come close to coming close to our budget, the only supplemental request I've done my entire tenure was my first year in which I inherited a budget that turns out was thirty percent less than purposely thirty percent less than what was needed to make payroll. I know that the predates the, the, Mr. Anderson, you're Chris for your time and Mr. Soder, I think your first response is no, you, you clearly got the numbers wrong, redo it.
Like, or you're set, everybody's going home in September apparently.
But due to definitely.
We'll run out of money.
It's the additional research, like, no, I'm, I'm pretty confident about this. So that's the only time, so what the proposal is is going back and forth quite a bit, scaled it down from some previous versions frankly, the is to scale according to a percentage is the creation of a new pay scale that is applicable only to the attorneys that scaled entirely to the elected salary. So it becomes a self-correcting, builds in a self-correcting mechanism to basically the, the ratios proportions, the percentage between positions is static regardless of different cost of living adjustments and so forth. Cost of living adjustments would be smaller than what would go towards elected offices and departments. Traditionally, the cost of living is only applied to the county portion of my salary, which is about thirty-something percent of my total salaries paid for by the, by the county, the state pays the vast majority. Well, vast majority, about two-thirds of my salary, so that and that portion is tied to the state salary commission, which sets the salaries for the executive legislative and judicial state branches and my is tied to this per court judge. And there's different county approaches on percentages of tying that, the many, many counties are moving towards full, full equity between the PA and the, the spur core. We, we, we don't do that, I'm not asking for an increase by any means, the, just to make that clear. But the, and so we thought a self-correcting way to hopefully maintain competitiveness is to build into the percentage based on the PA, so there's, there's always a little bit of different distance, I know that was an issue a few years ago where chief deputy salaries and, and some elected offices were approaching, in one case, I think exceeded the elected salary, that, that creates profound incentive problems and issues as well as there, there's no getting around that there's increased responsibility and the oversight difficulties with that elected position. So it's a creation of a, a generalized DPA one, two, and three chief positions, the DPA one. The proposal would be is an entry level, it's why there's only three grids that you, you can only be entry level for so long. And it would definitely be, the proposal would be at that point an up or out scenario. Either after three years, you're long-term and, and or, or you're out. And, and, and so that's built in to some of the proposal, really. The main proposal is to address the entry level, address, I think, some of the issues with the, the chief position falling behind. And the flesh out the middle to make it the, for the first time possibly attractive for lateral hires. That has not been an issue, that has been an issue that has basically been given up on in the office for years and years to where any possibility of a lateral hire is just, it's, it's, it's beyond a fantasy, the, because most of the attorneys in that five, ten, even up to fifteen-year timeframe that are working other jurisdictions would have, that would necessitate a thirty, forty thousand dollar pay cut to come, and that's, that's never going to happen. So it's the, and not that, you know, theoretically you can end up in the situation in ten years in which you have a tough, heavy office and there would be, you know, the, a, a, a budgetary hit that would be much more than now, there's no way around that, but it, it's extremely unlikely to occur, we haven't, I don't think we've ever, we've achieved full staffing, I think. Just going through this last night, I think of the seven and a half years, I think we spent six months under, being fully staffed. But it, it's, it's an ongoing issue and, and that's, and generally I haven't moved to fill positions just to fill the positions, I've always held out for people that hopefully would make a good fit, and that's why we've historically returned. I keep saying return, I guess not draw on or not spend budgeted amounts that, you know, when you have an empty attorney position for six months, twelve months, that's, that's a very high cost saving. The current proposal, the preliminary projections, it would not require supplemental this year because of the openings would definitely have to be taken into account for next year's budget request depending on how the positions are filled. So you know, the, the, we're I'm coming forward with this proposal, I know it is a bit of an ask, I'm not pretending otherwise. We're just kind of reached the limit of what we think we can do without doing something a little more dramatic, and this definitely is on, on the dramatic, and it is, would be competitive statewide, it would definitely be a market leader in the gorge. And that's what I, I believe, and I think Mr. Van Cleve supports, that that's what's going to take to fix the rather dire situation that, that we're in, that I'm not trying to highlight without, without too much attention, right, go ahead.
Can I get you to clarify on me how this cola would work for these people if they're tied to your salary?
I'm sorry, what's that?
How would the colas work for the employees if they're tied to your salary and only part of your salary?
It would just be whatever portion of my salary would be passed on to them, so they would not receive the same level of colas.
So if we gave a four percent cola to employees, they wouldn't necessarily get a four percent. They would only get a four percent of thirty-three percent of yours.
Correct, okay. And on the flip side, to be fully transparent, is that, that would be on the county portion. The, the, the alternative is on the statewide adjustments that they've made.
Right. We would be on the hook for that.
That's correct.
Because it's a percentage of that, of the overall.
Correct, so fifty percent of a spirit court salary is paid for by the state towards me. So that fifty percent number, for example, that I think salary, spirit court judges comes in about two or three, let's use two hundred thousand as the, the example that so fifty percent of that is hundred thousand, so the county receives a hundred thousand. If they increase that from two hundred to, to ten, fifty percent of that increase would be passed on through me, which has happened several times over the years, so it would be a five thousand increase to me. And then those percentages based, for example, fifty-five percent of that would go at the bottom of the scale, at the top of the scale, eighty-five percent of that number would be attributed to the county. So that's built in the, the, the distance between the positions and the coordinate levels of responsibility would, would, would stay the same, that would be static.
Okay, where, where did you come up with the percentages of the fifty-five and the eighty-five and all the little spots in between? Was this looking at another county somewhere or looking at comparables in our gorge area? Or just looking at what you think it's going to take and then that's the math on what the percentage turned out to be?
A little bit of combination of everything, to be frankly, the, the, looking at where the entry numbers are, where the top number is, and trying not to the top number, I think it was key not to exceed some of the possibilities, especially some of the larger jurisdictions, with taking into account that that wasn't reasonable. And so scaling back some of those percentages. The, the three, the, for example, the, the steps one, two, three, four, and five, there's three percent. Let's just reflect, except for DPA one, the, the DPA two and three is three percent, that's just reflective of my experience dealing with the county system that that was, how they, they did it, that was
In between.
Correct, that, that's where that comes from. And then that, that's where that comes from, except for the, the one that was built in a two percent to kind of scale that back a little bit. Because again, that, that's meant to be an entry level position. So that's where the, the three percent comes. And then the fixed percentage at the tail end came back. The, when I started, they ran them, but it seemed relatively consistent and because some of this needs to have some form of simplicity for application for the auditors, HR office, so forth. So if you get into, well, seventy-two point three, four percent and, you know, that, that kind of stuff.
For not a lot of ink on this paper, it's very scary. For its limited amount of ink.
He was saving, but.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. I, I just, you know, you indicate, you know, no budget impact, no supplemental needed this year.
We don't believe so.
We don't believe, right, there's in a typical, typical attorney where there's always a little
The possibility.
Like someone could show up tomorrow.
Unbelievable, people walk in right away and got hired, then the, most likely.
And I got a bridge to sell you somewhere too.
Well, I don't know, you started offering the right amount.
Yeah, you may, maybe. You might.
Which is what we're trying to.
What we're trying to do.
I guess I can't be upset if.
Right, but can you talk as far as like, so we're comparing apples to apples as far as what? You know, next year, what would that look like?
It, it, it's relatively difficult because the, because there's never been consistent. The budget has always been anticipatory in the sense that it hasn't really been filled, so that we've used lower budget. I, I would forecast under the best case scenario from maybe the budgetary perspective, worst case scenario for mine. You're looking at between a ninety, hundred thousand.
Okay.
If they're fully filled.
If they were fully filled for the full year.
Right, but that, that, that's on the relative low end, if they were filled with medium level theoretically, and just to be clear, that if the decision was made, which I think is extremely unlikely to fill the positions with very experienced things, which is extremely unlikely that an experienced practitioner is one of going to come in and handle misdemeanors, for example, but at least one of these are almost guaranteed to be some form of entry level, but if there were the, the availability But at least one of these are almost guaranteed to be some form of entry level. But if there were the the availability of. More experience, then you could get up to, I think, worst case scenario from budgetary standpoint, probably hit about one forty, one fifty.
It's less than I was expecting, actually.
There's not very many of them.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's.
That's why there's not much ink on.
Okay. So. Like, I understand the D P A one, one, zero years, one year, two year. If you can't get past two years, you're probably not going to become a two.
Mostly.
You know, which makes sense. And so can you talk about going from a D P A two to a D P A three? I don't know the recommended. Barments to go through that, you know. Do you expect that you would, that somebody would come in and be a D P A two for six years? And then suddenly become a D P A three? Because that wouldn't make sense because you're going backwards.
It would depend on the the quality and nature of the work, the part of the proposal, the the word chart. So there you you have myself and then four deputy positions. The first position would either be a a chief or D P A three. And so the, you know, they could end up in a situ, you know, very happy with the performance of the current chief, the police don't. I don't want any rumors to get started about that. No, I think he's taking his wife to the hospital today. So I know pre planned things, so nothing to be long. That, you know, there's serious possibility because the one of the issues that we're getting increasingly concerned about and, you know, whether it's my issue. Next year to decide, well, know a lot more next week. And then again, in November, whether it's my problem next year or someone else's problem. But the the there, there's nothing up and coming. There's nothing coming. There's nothing that's working its way up through the process. And whether I'm here, you know, four more, six more months, forty more years, eight more years, there's. There there there's not, there's nothing really right now. In the pipeline, there's nothing in the pipeline.
Not sure we even own a pipeline.
Well, there's a lot of talk about pipelines lately, but. So that, you know, the 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 ideas, the descriptions will be relatively generic, be tied to the responsibilities they have. For example, if the two is doing some district and some felonies, that will most likely be a two. A three would be someone that's dealing with the most serious felonies, the the either the the chief or the three. Or the other opportunity probably for the three. Our D P A three is currently classified solely as civil. Because some of the difficulties in in attracting that, but so that would be. For example, you know, a relatively new civil deputy that has some experience, I'm sure started out as to work their way up depending on. How they do, there's. It allows for some flexibility based on performance evaluations and so forth. But it's principally based on experience and the responsibility. The more responsibility, the more serious that that would be impacted on where they fall under the scale. If you have someone that spends the vast majority of their time dealing with, you know, the. Serious sexual assaults and serious burglaries, things like that, that's much higher responsibility than someone's dealing with, you know, the D U I from. The guy that had or the gal that had a class of wine too much.
So what you're thinking on this of promotion, let's say from a D P A one to a D P A two, they just going straight up at the one year mark? Or would they go up and back as?
Once you pass the entry level, the the my idea is they would start out the one, right? Where the one was startup, that's the two, but on zero step or step one or already one.
So so when you're moving through, you're going D P A one to the end, then you're starting to D T D P A two at the beginning. And then that works its way through D P A two if you're civil or three, because I'm looking at the break.
Yeah, the two and three gets a a little more complicated based on the responsibility experience. The one to two is very straightforward that. Either you're entry level or not. And that would always start, that would reset on if you were promoted for.
I mean, could you see a situation where a two is just stays a two? I mean, they're, I mean, that that's their skill set, that's their, right, that that's.
Most likely.
Okay. Like, it's not everybody is necessarily working their way up the grid.
No, that's not a necessity by any means. You know, that that. And that's why I think I mentioned a few minutes ago, that you could end up in a situation five, 10 years from now where you you do have several. But the proposed the the word chart would be the P A chief or P A and then two or three and then one, one or two or one or two. So there would never be a situation where there's more than two threes.
Right.
No possible.
Right. Okay.
To limit some of that, you know, high end, the exposure.
Right.
Not everyone can be the chief, you know.
No. Well, and you don't need all chiefs.
No, certainly not. Right.
I mean, you know, sometimes you don't hire somebody, you don't hire a, you know, neurosurgeon to. Do some, you know, put stitches in my.
When it's unlikely someone would be brought in to be the chief. Right. I mean, they would come in with the possibility that someone that could end up being the chief, they would have started out as a three to earn that right.
Okay. So with the people that we currently have, I know you don't have many people, what have you run the numbers on what kind of a pay jump this would be right now?
Yeah. So the the ones, the ones relatively easy, that's the chief position currently. If I remember correctly, I think it's budgeted one oh eight this year would go to one forty one. Miss sells apparently is D P A three slotted to make about eighty seven thousand. And so that would depend, you know, my intention would be to put her step one for the D P A three. So it'll be from eighty six to one thirteen.
Okay, two.
And she might be hearing that for the first time, so I apologize if. Although hearing that you might get a twenty thousand dollar raise, you would think be ecstatic for anyone.
I have no further questions since I was the one that recommended we take no action without chewing on something for a week. That would be my recommendation is to chew on it for a week.
Maybe turn that mic out if you're gonna sit there. Just push the button on the end of it.
Or come out front.
Our understanding, my understanding was that you didn't want to take available resources and spread it out over all employees. You wanted to target.
Right.
Money towards critical needs.
Right.
And so equal to the dispatchers, which you recently made the decision. I think credit the next or equal critical need would be in deputy prosecutors. Both in their recruitment and their retention. So so I think that if I heard you right, a couple of weeks ago, that was how you wanted us. To start addressing some of these these positions. So the so you'll be focusing the money on the greatest need. I think that David's done a great job, the P A's done a great job putting this together. It's got traditional elements. It's it's got grades and steps. It's five or it's five steps over six years, which is similar to the comp plan we have. But the average tenure for deputies, three years. So it didn't make sense to have seven, nine, 10, you know, we need to. So I think his focus on the sweet spot of the D P A twos and threes makes sense. It's also innovative, and I think having the limited first grade, three steps to first grade, having one for the chief. I think that makes it having it tied to his pay, I think is innovative. Very few counties are doing that. And I think that's probably going to be the wave of the future. I think this is going to be a tremendous help in recruitment and retention because I think it addresses both. And I reviewed all twenty two postings in the state and looked at their salaries. I reviewed many other counties in the state. And I reviewed every counter county from Clark in Multomo all the way to Walla Walla County. And this will put us in the market leader. On both sides of the river, east to west and in both rural Oregon and rural Washington, which is where we need to be. If we're going to fill the ranks. So I just want to say, I think he's, I think he's done a tremendous job. It's innovative. And I, based on all the comparators I looked at, this should do what what you hope it should do.
By a market leader, what percentage are we talking about?
Well, it varies from step to step, you know, some have twelve steps, some have thirteen, some have five, some listed just one. And then it's up to the, it's up to the P A how he moves from there. So I think in the entry level, it puts us at, you know, at the top. Where where we need to be so we can recruit, not the very top, but it. Pretty close in some cases. And I think in terms of the D P A twos and threes, where we can get that retention. I think it makes us very competitive with most of the counties in both states, except for, of course, the valley in Oregon and up through King and Pierce. So I think where we need it to be in the D P A twos and threes kind of in the middle, the sweet spot. And then in terms of attracting, I I think it's going to put us, definitely will make us the market leader.
Yeah, the the middle level definitely is competitive. The entry level is the market leader.
Yeah, right, right.
There's no doubt about that. So.
But that's, I would also say that while many of our positions, we could be. Average and get away with that just fine on these four or five positions if we're not market leader or really close to it. Good luck.
Well, and we were looking if we came in with something less, see how it works for a year. Now we're a year seven or eight of not having a full staff. And and what's the impact on public safety not to have that department fully staffed? It hasn't been since I've been here. It hasn't been. I think, you know, for six or seven years for extended period of time. So we're really in a position where I think if you want to have an impact. And have the best opportunity to recruit and retain, then we're really past the point of seeing, you know, incremental. Well, let's just try this for a year and see how we do. And then next year we'll try something else. And then we're two years into it. I think this will. This is a a good approach from where we're at and where we've been. If you keep doing what you've always done, you're going to get what you've always got. So this is, this is a significant change, but I think it's, I think he's done a great job.
Well, I appreciate that. And, you know, the one thing I just want to reinforce the board, this this is not. This is not done lightly or easily for me. This is contrary to a lot of my base impulses for how I've conducted the office. And handled the budget over the years. I I just, we're at a position where this this. You know, the it's, we've got to do something to get more competitive and, you know, I know a bit of a broken record. But the still pills in comparison to what the felony public defenders are are looking at. But, you know, so that's that's where we are. And I really. Am formally asking the court, I mean, the the board to move forward with, yeah, I'm so used to.
Right. That makes you feel good. I got a shiver.
Well, I'd have to stand up when you walked in. But that's always the big difference. Right. That's the big, big.
Well, let's consider this now. Yeah, I don't.
I could imagine that I go through to your head after.
Yes.
So what do you mean you go to the restaurant? No one, everyone doesn't stand up. But but idiot, I just, but.
We should try that when they come in for budget.
Okay, I always try to look at the unintended consequences on this one. If we do this, what are we, are are you expecting for the indigenous defense? Are we going to see numbers come in that are astronomical compared to the past? Because they will, I mean, if we're, if we're going increases, I'm sure we're going to see that on the backend. I would, I would assume. And I'm not, yeah, go ahead and start squeezing.
I guess, yes.
And and I'm not saying that you have control over that. I mean, that's, but you have knowledge here and I need to see the big picture of what is the true cost could potentially be.
Well, it certainly hasn't worked out the other way around. First off with that observation, but, you know, I don't know, the it's, I can't really be involved with that process. I mean, the current numbers we set up were determination was B. That was, that was what was required by market conditions and lack of, lack of options. That that which has changed, I mean, the the that was much more competitive bidding process that occurred. I believe Mr. Schar, you sat on the board when myself, Randall Krog and another attorney made her own proposal. That dramatically undercut the contract that you had. I think Mr. Krog and I are both very happy that we did not get that contract. Since he's now a spirit court judging on the P A, but.
Everything works out.
Didn't feel that way at the time. But so.
Can I have that ball?
You know, to me, it's it's somewhat apples and oranges. I've heard some individuals that want to make a direct comparison to public defense departments and P As. What they usually ignore the fact that we don't represent individual clients. We represent the state as a whole. This is society as a whole. We operate a full service law firm. We aren't, this isn't a one trick pony as to trying to get a rapist off the hook. That's not our job. We are full service on civil aspect, on the criminal aspect, on some of the the we have. Were enmeshed in some of the family law process because we represent the state of Washington child support enforcement actions. And some of the issues of modifications, child support and so forth. That's a fair amount of Rebecca's time and a half of. Legal admin's time just does that. And so and we have a greater responsibility. We have all sorts of special rules of professional conduct. That only apply to us and we have the scrutiny that does not come with some of those other issues. So these, again, are full time jobs where forty hours is an absolute minimum that you're on the hook for. It's not infrequent to, you know, far exceed that. And so, you know, that's, it is, I I think a bit. Apples and oranges. I I don't know what you'll be getting this year, whether there'll be more competitive process based on some of the stories I'm hearing throughout the state. Be find that extremely unlikely that you'll have a wealth of options. And, you know, that very well could happen. I don't think it will be tied to this and it certainly shouldn't be. Because they really are apples and oranges for a part time contracted position versus a full time, full service. Position. But, you know, you you might hear that. I think some of the other consequences that I'm sure you're going to have. And I've indicated this before. Yeah, I'm the second in line here. I'm sure there's going to be others as to, wait, I got a problem too. So, I mean, that's, there's going to be a natural consequence.
Well, I I would say to the to the public defender contract. Regardless of this, I have every expectation that when it's time to renew, it's not going to be fun. Because the mar, I mean, if our, if indicators across the state or in other counties or any guide. It's 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 the same as it is across lots of sectors where, you know, you can't get anybody to do it. The ones that will do it, you gotta pay them. I mean, and they know it where it's a really limited. Will they use this? Probably, it'll just be another talking point. If we don't do it, they'll use something else. It won't really matter. It's the. Yeah, I expect to get, I mean, because the current contract is was a wild escalation from the previous contracts. And yes, the glory days of people, you know, fighting to the bottom are over. Thank you for that. Two years, I think, was our last, some three, two, three. This one's two. I don't think we've ever had more than a two year. So it's always time to renegotiate. So, yeah.
I look at this and getting your doctorate in law is dang expensive these days.
Yeah.
Really dang expensive. And when I look at the numbers that we're currently paying. And other cities and counties are currently paying, it reminds me of what the airlines used to do. And that was you started making little to nothing, if not less than nothing. And then you would work your way up over time. Well, we can't do that. Because that's not an option with how how we run our businesses. Because when you work your way up, you go somewhere else. I mean, there's a turnover here. And if we want to have people who can afford to live, can afford to pay their student loans back. And can successfully do the job, I, this is what we have to do. And and so, I mean. I understand how woefully underpaid these positions have been with regards to their education level. And when I look at all the others who want to stand in line, if there are any that want to come forward and say, well, what about me? I've got problems. Well, do you require a J D for your position? Because there's a big difference between a doctorate and a bachelor's degree and a law degree.
Well, I'm sure they'll come with other reasons of why there's. Just like I would if I was them.
But they are right now. He threw the gauntlet.
Is the only part.
No, no, because.
I never laugh at a director elected advocating. I'll never laugh at a director elected advocating.
No, absolutely not. I, I will say the thing that scares me in this situation is, is that we pay sixty five, sixty six thousand or so, sixty six thousand. Um, towards your salary. And, and I'm have to look at, you know, the budget in the future, and if these are directly tied to that. We could be going into budget shortfalls while the state could be taking your hundred thousand. That goes between you and the judge, and they could jump that or bump that, they could make. They, they could push it to two fifty because nobody wants to do it, or the salary survey says this is what it is. And then we have not just your position, because yours is, the difference is covered by the state, we don't have to worry about you. It's these other positions that could take a significant jump that we may not be able to budget for, and I don't know how we. Could cut everywhere else, I'm, I will say, number one, that. That what you do is a core function of county government, absolutely hands down a core function and it has to be done. I'm just trying to understand how, in a worst case scenario, because that's how I have to play, in a worst case scenario. What happens if we can't pay it or we can't afford it? What, what would we do in the future to ensure that we're not having to lay off five people in order to make up for the cost increase of two?
Well, the budgetary constraints become that much, you would have to look at staffing levels and, and, and moving people back on hours, there'd be no choice about that. On the, on the, you know, the, the, the flip side is that I am handcuffing myself and my successors largely from. Um, almost making it impossible to advocate for themselves to have a proportion of the salary that is commensurate with our. Comparable counties and other counties, the, the, you know, the, uh, I come in about the third lowest paid PA in the state, uh. And I've never brought an issue, I've never made an argument, uh, for an increase, and this would basically handcuff, uh, the position from going in, because it would not only be.
Right.
Uh, the increase for the PA would be multiple, uh, there would be a multiplier, uh, uh, three, four times what that impact would be. So it's kind of a, a mutual deal.
Mutual assured destruction.
I would say, but I would say no, because you can always then adjust those ratios.
That's true.
Back into this market, so I, I would disagree with that, but just for clarification, I said, you should come, we should have had you come in last.
Right.
Because your numbers are so big, not last, just for clarification.
No, I'm definitely not laughing, um.
Well, and I would say ultimately, in a worst case scenario, if that happened, then that's, you know, there are budgetary constraints, then. There's reduction in force, I mean, you, if there's no, I mean, we are not required, I mean, you're not required to have, your, your staff that you have, the staffing levels you have. Are determined to be the minimum for you to be able to perform the functions of your office.
Right, but if we did a salary commission and the salary commission said fifteen grand. That doesn't make the rest of these go up commensurate, we can keep these at where they are and just adjust that percentage if we so choose.
Yeah, we could.
So it could just be a one.
Yeah, there's nothing, there's nothing, we always say that, there's nothing, today's board, nothing of future board can undo.
Before the salary survey.
Yeah.
Or the sour commission, they would still be a market.
Right.
Leader after.
I think it's.
You could adjust those percentages.
Much ado about nothing.
I was gonna say, he's the larger number that would juice a few more to stand in line.
Well, our budget's always been disproportionate on staffing because of the, the, the proportion of the attorneys. I appreciate the comment for all, I'm sure there's at least a couple electives jumping out of their chair right now if they're here and not disagreeing, but, uh, you know, part of, um, it, it. Someone had alluded to the three-year, uh, tenure for the deputy, um, that's actually an accomplishment, and I know that's hard to believe that. Uh, when I was a deputy, the years before, the years after, it was quite common to be churning through, um, two, sometimes three deputies a year. Uh, that, that when I became a deputy here in two thousand and seven, my predecessor in my position had been there six weeks. Uh, his predecessor had been there six months. When I left after one year, uh, that position was filled for less than a year, uh, that, 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 that was, was quite notorious that. Sorry, I'm sure you have some institutional memory of that.
I'd forgotten that, but yeah, that's true.
So, and so.
You could do that.
Even though you'd have a bunch of open spots. That has stabilized considerably, um, in the last seven years, uh, you know, my chief has been with me almost seven years, my civil deputy is almost six years, or. Uh, district court deputy that just left was almost four years, um, historically for the office, those are very long tenure. But we're just not filling the positions, and we're not getting anything beating through a pipeline.
Right.
Just so you sleep better, I'm not crying or anything, I just, I just need to chew on it.
Yeah, I would say in keeping, I'm, I don't see that we have an alternative, but, um, I would, yeah, I think in keeping with our, we don't make decisions in, without some contemplation.
Which gives everybody else a chance to yell at us before we make a decision, which might change an opinion, it might not.
Thank you, um, for answering my questions and also giving me enlightenment on the opposite side of it. Um, hamstringing yourself so that you can help, um, your own, uh, employees is beyond an admirable trait. And I didn't even, that didn't even cross my mind, um.
I appreciate that, I, I do hope it's, uh, given, um, serious and due consideration, I'm hoping that, um, this plan or something, uh, approximating. Will pass and give us a chance here, uh, so, um, yeah.
No, I will, I will, I will be honest, um, I will one hundred percent give it clear and due consideration, and I will spend some time with. HR and our fiscal manager to ensure that we can, so, you know, looking forward, we can ensure that this is what we can pay for, but. Um, I'm the first person, I think it might have been my idea that we've, maybe Dan's idea, that we focus on these hard to fill positions.
I, I appreciate it.
Absolutely, no, no, because, I mean, that was the direction that, that we wanted to go is, is that, you know, we have to fill these really hard to fill positions that are really difficult and.
Before it gets worse, yeah.
And if we can, I mean, the amount, I mean, I don't know your training, but, I mean, how much we pay, and when you bring somebody new in, there's a significant amount of training that goes on. And every year that you don't have to train somebody new, or every six months or six weeks or whatever it is, is money we are ahead, and you pay for that.
Well, it takes at least a year to get any semblance of confidence, they sort of know what they're doing, uh, so, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, okay.
We feel that up here, because we took, almost getting there after.
They still haven't got any confidence in what I'm doing, but then again, I know what I'm doing, so. Well, like, like a lot of, you know, things that, um, are difficult to, you know, the, the, there's a lot of power over people's life and freedom. Uh, the decision-making that happens, um, when we're at other, and that's why. You know, that's why, um, the advanced credentials are supposed to alleviate some of the concern about that. You want some, uh, cause, you know, the, the good training and oversight, especially for younger folks, there's very few things more dangerous than someone straight out of law school. Uh, because they tend to have no shortage of confidence in their abilities and lack the experience to understand that, uh, that confidence is misplaced. Uh, so, um, yeah, um, with there are, um, there is one pending litigation matter that we do need to have a brief discussion about.
Uh, right before that, I would, I would like to ask my seatmates, um, would we like to set a time that we will have this discussion with him? I don't want to leave it open-ended, I want to say.
Uh, next, next Tuesday.
No, I'm fine with whenever he comes back for next week, I don't.
I would prefer before the, um, the SEPA discussion.
I, I don't anticipate it being a long discussion.
Let's do it, one, one, one before the other. No, I don't care.
No, well, we will, we will bring this up next week, um, at your regular end of the day.
Yeah, that's true.
Well, I hope to be here, I'm currently scheduled to do a misdemeanor trial, uh, on Tuesday, so I'm not sure if I'll be here or not, I'll do.
Is that typical for the prosecuting attorney to handle a misdemeanor trial? Are you just doing that to add?
Yeah.
No, no.
If, if, so the question would be, is if you're not available, we can push it off one week and that's okay with you?
Um, if we have a.
There's any questions or anything, I, yeah, I'm always available, um. If they answer any questions or anything like that, like, you know, the, based on a conversation earlier today on Lena Torres, I'll probably be available Tuesday, but I can't make any. Uh, representations on that, um, you know, and there's.
Are you, is available at it, like, if we put you on the morning instead of the evening?
Well, if I'm in trial, I'm in trial, uh, yeah, I'd be in white salmon, so it'd be, that's something I can really.
So if we just say yes, we can discuss that next week if you're not here, if we're changing it or alternating or have questions, then we'll have that.
Yeah, hopefully, uh, the, you know, the, it's not, uh, statute, but, yeah, uh, you know, I, uh, some sort of. Guidance next week would be sincerely appreciated.
Absolutely, no, we will, we will do that. Okay, uh, is there anything else for the good of the order, otherwise, um?
Did you, you had a executive session?
Yeah.
Uh, there is a brief matter we need to discuss next.
How much is the brief?
About five minutes.
Oh, by no way, okay.
What do you mean, you wait?
For recess and telling them.
Oh, okay.
A comfort break, I think he's inquiring about.
All right, for those that are online that have been here this entire time, um, we will be entering into executive session, uh, um, in accordance with RCW forty two, thirty one, ten, one, I. Um, and that we will, uh, when we return, we will do nothing but, um, uh, end the day. So thank you all for being a part of this, being online the entire time, um, thank you and have a great day, um, and we will be in executive session for five minutes. Start with.